Good New Year to you all and hope things will progress well for the city and the health of our people. Okay, Mr Many?
Thank you again, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the Chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I will now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
If members could confirm their presence when I call their name firstly, Lord Provost?
Present.
Thank you, councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Councillor Cadell.
Present.
Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Thank you, councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Hunter.
Present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Randall.
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sors.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Triggshank.
Present.
Councillor McCreedy.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Present.
Councillor Mara.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Bailey Knight.
Present.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Councillor Hay.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
I'm here.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Councillor Murray.
I'm here.
And finally councillor Ross. Councillor Ross. Well, Mark Kay, councillor Ross, is absent at this time. That concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Mr Waddell. Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening, the minutes for information and record purposes. Lord Provost.
Are these agreed?
Lord Provost, councillor McIrvin has a question regarding item two.
Right, two is right. Councillor McIrvin.
Thanks, Lord Provost, on the Fleming Trust.
If it's in relation to the Fleming Trust councillor McIrvin, could I ask you to come in again when the Fleming Trust is formally convened?
So my apologies.
Thank you. On the basis that those minutes are therefore agreed, Lord Provost, that concludes the business of the city council. Could I please ask you to remain in the chair for the meeting of the city council as Fleming trustees, Mr Waddell?
Thank you. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, and there being no declarations, that takes you onto item two. And you have the audited statement of a case before you, together with the accompanying report, both of which are for noting.
Lord Provost, can I ask councillor McIrvin to come in at this stage?
Yeah, councillor McIrvin.
Apologies again, Chair, for that. And page three of the Fleming Trust financial statement, at the very bottom, it shows financial year 2021 and an increase in comparison to previous years, twenty-two, seven, two, nine. I was just looking for a bit of clarity with regards to the lost rents and bad debts for myself and maybe others. What do we mean by lost rents? Is that the term for vacant properties that were not picking up on rents? And bad debts, is that an impact, a direct impact from the pandemic? Being a factor in this with people losing their jobs and loss of household income?
Lord Provost, Mrs Fairline wishes to speak.
Right. Mrs Fairline.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Just to confirm that this is the impact of the pandemic. I'll ask David Simpson just to give you a bit more detail on that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, convener. Yeah, it's absolutely the direct impact of the pandemic. It's mirrored in our own DCC stock, where we were unable to let properties for a significant period of time due to lockdown and the knock-on effects of that. So if you see the Fleming Trust properties, there's ninety-two properties that are managed exclusively by the city council. It's the same impact that we have in our own stock about lost rent. So the lost rents referred to is lost rental income through not letting properties.
Can I get a supplementary, please, Chair? So the toll that we see there, so from lost rents and bad debts, what sort of percentages are we looking at? Are we looking at a fifty-fifty split? Are we looking at more lost rents than bad debt?
If I could just come back in on that. Typically, the bad debt aspect of this figure is usually fairly small. So the majority, I would suggest, will be down to lost rental income. But I haven't got these exact breakdown figures in front of me, councillor. But I think that's the way that this has panned out. In the past, the bad debts is usually quite a small sum for the Fleming Trust. Thanks for that.
There are no indications of any further questions, Lord Provost.
Right. Go on to the next item. Have we agreed?
On the basis that that's agreed, Lord Provost, that concludes the business of the city council as Fleming trustees. The next meeting is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. Thank you.
Right.
Well, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. Veronica, would you like to introduce us, please?
Thank you. The first item is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations? Item two, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service Quarterly Performance Report, first of July to thirtieth of September 2021. This report is for noting.
Okay, I would like to welcome Scottish Fire and Rescue and just open the floor to them to introduce the report and then questions from members. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members, and thank you very much, convener. Before I move to the quarter two performance report, I would like, if I may, to provide a short update on the unwanted fire alarm signal consultation, which ran for twelve weeks from July, was closed in October last year, and I would like to thank all of those that contributed to the discussion and those that submitted responses. All the feedback was collated and presented to the board of the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service in December, and the board have agreed to implement option A, which was to call challenge all automatic fire alarms from non-domestic premises unless exempted. Key amendments have been made to the original proposal following feedback, so that exempted premises now includes hospitals. And the implementation date for this has been moved back until April 2023. I will ensure that during that time, the local fire safety enforcement officers use the time fully to support duty holders to make sure that they're fully conversant with their legal responsibilities. And full details of the decision and the amendments were emailed to all stakeholders that responded to the consultation in December. So hopefully many of you were already aware of that information. I would now like to move to page three of your pack and invite members to scrutinise, question and note the quarterly monitoring report for quarter two. If you look at the performance summary on page eight, you will see below average activity across accidental dwelling fires and associated casualties and fatalities. We also see a similar pattern across the non-domestic premises with no casualties or fatalities reported across the eleven incidents that we experienced in that quarter. Positive performance has also been reported against road traffic collisions, road traffic collision fatalities and unwanted fire alarm signals, although we have seen an increase in the number of road traffic collision non-fatal casualties. And finally, we continue to feel the effects of the spike in deliberate fire setting, which we experienced during quarter one. And this has spilled over into quarter two, although we did implement a number of multi-agency prevention and intervention strategies earlier in the year. And we have seen a marked decrease in this type of incident as the year progresses and hopefully we'll see this continue through the rest of the reporting year. So overall, the report for quarter two is positive. But we were still operating during a period of changing Covid restrictions, with working, socialising and commuting patterns significantly affected. And this is likely to have played into these figures that are reported today, which in turn makes benchmarking more challenging. And now, before we take your questions, I would like to ask Group Commander Graham Smart just to provide some additional information and context around the figures that I've discussed there. So if you would, Graham.
Thank you very much, Eric, Commander Wood, and good evening, everybody. So again, just following on from Mr Wood's introduction there, I'd just like to go into a little bit more detail regarding some of the headline indicators. As Mr Wood's mentioned, so we've got nine out of the twelve, which are either below or less than ten percent of that headline target for the period in question. So it is a very positive report and we're quite happy with obviously the direction that we're going in. And just one of the areas in particular I want to bring to your attention, and again, just really to put some context into it. So again, on page eight, we're looking at headline indicator four there, and the eleven incidents in a non-domestic setting. So again, just really, what does that mean? You know, it's a fairly vague statement. And again, just to give you some appreciation of that. So out of these eleven incidents that we had, they're all classed as accidental by cause. We also, further analysis and the outcomes of the fire investigation reports indicate that the majority of these eleven incidents were mainly by a faulty electricity supply or faulty electrical equipment. Or there was also a couple of incidents where we had cooking incidents, which again would be in a non-domestic setting. So again, that kind of gives you a bit of an understanding of what's happening at these types of incidents. I just want to focus on a little bit more, again, in particular with road traffic collisions that Mr Wood has already commented on. It's a similar pattern that we're seeing over the last six years. And again, out of these fifteen incidents that we've had for quarter two, we're looking at four of these incidents that actually required physical rescue by firefighters using hydraulic extrication equipment. We have seen an increase, as we're indicating in headline indicator number nine. And you know, it is obviously a bit of a rise from the previous quarter in particular. So year to date, we're sitting at sixteen and obviously thirteen of these have been in quarter two. What I would say again, just to put that into context, that there isn't any particular trend with these casualties. The incidents in particular happened at various times during the day. But again, just in terms of, so what are we doing about that to move on from the future? And I'll pass over to our police colleagues in a moment, because I've no doubt they will obviously want to comment perhaps on road safety initiatives as well. But there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, collaborating in a multi-agency environment to have a focus, for example, on a replacement for Safe Drive Stay Alive. That was obviously a very successful programme that we had with all the schools in Tayside. And obviously, in terms of our focus being Dundee. Covid, along with everything else, has had an impact on that. So we're very much looking at how we can approach that and doing it differently, using the smarter use of technology that's out there as well and giving that learning experience the best opportunity that we can. And the thing later, again, I really just wanted to comment on was the Community Safety Engagement Programme. So that would be on page twenty-two of your report, top of the page. And again, it was just really to put it in line with the summer thematic action plan, or TAP, as we call it, in the fire service. And again, very much focused on what was happening, as Mr Wood commented on there, on deliberate fire setting in the city. The antisocial behaviour aspect that goes with that too. And we obviously do see a bit of a rise, not only in Q2 with the better weather, but moving into Q3 and the autumn time and moving towards Guy Fawkes period. So we have made some significant impacts on that. Again, we've commented on there, again, on page twenty-two, the areas of, in particular in Dundee, where we're trying to reduce deliberate fire setting. And again, some specifics there of Locky and also the old Dundee College site on Constitution Road. So with that in mind, I'd like to invite any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Graham. I do see some questions and I'm going to start with councillor Short.
Thank you. Everyone, it's not so much a question but a comment, and it's actually two comments. First of all, it's not often that they're dancing in the streets of Arbroath, but they happen to be right across, I think, the whole of December. So I just wanted to give congratulations to firefighter Suter and everything that he did to put both your service and the area on the map. I think he did really well. I think we all agree that he definitely brought a smile to the face of the people in this area. And I believe it's actually his birthday today as well. So if you could pass on his congratulations for his birthday too. It's amazing where you can find out on Twitter. I'm not a stalker, honest. I also wanted to give my thanks to group commander and area commander. I think we sometimes forget that as we've been ongoing with the pandemic, you guys have not stopped. And on the second of December, I had a phone call and both services stepped up and came and basically sorted out the issue that we had. So I think it's really important to remember that it doesn't always go down on the paper when something hasn't happened, but very often you're there picking up the pieces across the city and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you so much for that teamwork and that joined-up service that really does make a difference to our community. So hopefully, starting the new year on the way that we mean to go on, just remembering that you're always there supporting us across the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those words, councillor Short. And I would just like to reassure members that firefighter Suter does not do his darts practice whilst he's on duty. He's fully engaged training. Hopefully, he did manage to see some of the Sky TV interviews and the various BBC pieces he did beforehand with his guide dog element as well. So it really was a good bit of news for everyone. I think that you're right, Covid has gone on quite a long time. We have felt the pressure, but news stories like that is always good, just to give everyone a bit of a lift. And I think it did for those that tuned into the darts. Thank you very much.
I'm sure the whole committee would concur with all of councillor Short's comments there. Thank you. Councillor McCreedy.
Thank you very much, convener. I'm sure we always agree with everything that councillor Short says. I'm sure you do as well, convener. And I thank Mr Wood for his comments at the start. I was going to ask a question around the unwanted fire alarm signals. You know, I think you may be aware that I've raised this issue before. I'm very concerned about this, you know, particularly as a representative of the West End, which includes, obviously, amongst others, Nine Miles Hospital and various student residencies. So it's good to hear. I've seen the feedback around the changes that are proposed, but the changes not impacting as much on hospitals as they might, as some of the options allowed. So I think that's good. I suppose my question, I was going to ask a question about how that might look in Dundee when it's implemented in 2023, but I think Mr Wood gave a an undertaking to kind of take us through that over time, and I think that's helpful. He may want to say some more. But I suppose my question is, I mean, are we doing everything that we can to encourage operators of buildings to ensure that they are limiting the number of unwanted automatic fire alarms? Because we know, you know, we know that every time a fire appliance leaves the station under blue light, it puts lives at risk. It's bad for the environment, it's bad for the finances of, you know, hard-pressed, you know, public finances and things like that, you know, and fundamentally, most importantly, it puts the lives of firefighters and indeed members of the public at risk. And you know, we need to make sure that they're only doing that when it's absolutely essential that they do that. So my question is around, is there more that we can do regarding standards of equipment that are acceptable? Is there things that, you know, is there anything that the Dundee City Council could do, either in the way of building regulations or indeed at planning, to ensure that we've got the latest, you know, technology involved? I know times are tough for a lot of people and we'll talk about that at other points in the meeting. But you know, I think it's important that we need to look at that, or whether there's any licensing things we can do, or whether it's a case that those things are set at Scottish level or even at UK level and that there's not much we can do other than perhaps make representation to appropriate levels of government, if that's where we are. But I think, you know, I'm aware that, you know, for example, the council will consider the kind of framework for planning over the next little while. And I just wonder if this is the sort of thing we should be including in that to make sure that we've got, you know, better quality equipment, that means that, you know, if there's a fire alarm goes off, that the chances are that there's a fire that needs a response from Scottish Fire and Rescue Service?
Thank you for that, councillor, and I think you're right, that there's a number of elements in there. The equipment elements, certainly, technology's moved on hugely. Some of the premises that we were very often called out to, the alarm systems are to a certain extent dated. They are due for renewal and through that process, we'll certainly support with advice whatever we can. And we do now have intelligent sensors that are far more accurate. There is a large cost in that. So I think to upgrade purely for the improved intelligence, it probably, the benefit probably, whilst it benefits the fire service, I think the local authority and the businesses probably have a different set of priorities when they have a functioning alarm. I think the real impact we can make is around the human element, because more often than not, the alarm is set off by some kind of human activity. It is either inappropriately cited or there has been some steam, other dust or other factors, poor maintenance that have set it off. So I think the year delay gives us a good amount of time to support that and support the duty holders. I think what we're seeing already is the increased awareness of the problem and the issue. We're starting to see a reduction in some of our unwanted fire alarm numbers. Too early to say if the two are associated, but the feedback we got when we were working towards the consultation process from services elsewhere in the country or down south was that as soon as they moved towards some kind of change to the response model, the duty holders became much more aware of the problem and put in place more stringent steps. It might just be moving staff tosters a bit stricter around things like that. We've promoted that over the years, but it's very difficult once we leave if there's no impact on the people running the business. So hopefully, a combination of the steps we've taken, the increased awareness with duty holders, the natural evolution of and replacement programmes for detection systems, it'll all combine together and I think we will get there, hopefully, with a minimal impact that you've spelled out that you're concerned around. And certainly, over the next year, our team of fire safety officers in the city will be engaging with duty holders. The responsibilities and legal position hasn't changed, it's just how we, how those responsibilities are picked up and the priority given to them. So we'll certainly be on hand to support all duty holders. We will be helping through the reviewing of risk assessments and any investigation on different approaches to take to help drive down the UFAAS. So I think there's a combination of things there. I think we're now in quite a good place. Awareness is raised. Hopefully, over the next twelve or so months, we will see a significant increase ahead of the implementation of the changes. So I really welcome the question and I'm more than happy to keep you posted as we move through the next twelve-month period.
Can I come back, convener? I think that's really a really helpful answer and I'm certainly in touch with Mr Wood about that. Thanks very much for that.
Thank you, councillor McCreedy. Bailey McPherson, you're next on the list.
Thanks indeed, convener, and a belated Happy New Year to everybody. Grateful to Mr Wood and his colleagues for comprehensive and very useful update as always. I wanted to ask a couple of questions that are unrelated. One is in relation to what we've just been discussing, unwanted fire alarms. And in a way, Mr Wood touched on it, just the tail end of what he said there. Because what I'm very keen to see, given in my own ward, as councillor McCreedy alluded to, significant numbers of non-domestic premises. And obviously, we note what he said, Mr Wood said, in relation to hospital premises. But what I would be really keen to see is regular progress reports on the level of engagement before this comes in in 2023. And if it could be more specific to elected members, it would be really, really helpful. Because this is an area I think we've all got a concern about. My second question is completely unrelated to that. It's in relation to the road traffic collision figures. I just really want a degree of clarity. It strikes me as blindingly obvious that there will be road traffic collisions where there is no need for the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service to be called. And I was just really wondering what the process is. If somebody phones 999 after a road traffic collision, I presume it's on the part of the operator of the 999 service to make a judgment as to whether or not Scottish Fire and Rescue Service involvement is necessary? And the reason in a way I'm asking that is, I'm just really wondering what value there is in the target. Because you have no control at all, obviously, over the number of road traffic collisions. And more so, you have no control over the number of road traffic collisions that might require or will require a Scottish Fire and Rescue Service response. And therefore, the target's something that you have no control. You know, I can understand the target, you could say, for example, going back to unwanted fire alarms. You can make a very good argument for saying, well, your proactivity has certainly, and in a very positive way, in recent times, seen a reduction. But I think this is an area where you have very little control. And I was just really wondering how the target comes about and the circumstances and how it comes about that you're actually called to a road traffic collision.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. You've hit on one of my pet subjects around performance reporting for things we can't control. In terms of, if a call comes into our operations control regarding a road traffic collision, then we would be attending it. You know, that filtering has probably been done, unless the advice is that there is no need for us to attend, unless it's very clear. is no need for us to attend, unless it's very clear. So the ones we are reporting there are the ones we've attended. And I would say predominantly all notifications into our operations control, we would be attending. There may be some where the ambulance have attended, they dealt with it, and they don't deem it necessary, but we wouldn't find out about that. In terms of the target, in trying to drive those down, I think we have had safe drive over the years. We do local engagement in schools. And measuring the impact of that is extremely difficult. I think road engineers, the technology in cars have a far bigger role to play in the safer roads that we have now. I think weather, it all plays a part in what ultimately ends up on a performance report that we are held accountable for. So it does come from our national performance reporting framework. It's a conversation that does get knocked around quite a lot. And what is it we can do? But I think it's still important to keep that in there because ourselves, police, ambulance partners, we do have quite a significant role to play in terms of the education. So I think that is the part we complain at there. So yeah, I agree. It's a difficult one. We can't fully control the way people drive and the road conditions and the technology in cars. But we can certainly try and influence throughout people's early lives, certainly, how they treat the responsibility of driving a car.
Yeah. I'm grateful for that. You know, it's difficult for you to be held accountable for something you have no control over, if you know what I mean. But I think that was a very helpful response. Just going back to my earlier point regarding unwanted fire alarms. It would be very useful indeed to have ongoing engagement, and particularly at sort of ward level, on how it's frankly going. I think it's going to be very important to have good engagement with the duty holders of the affected premises in the year ahead, prior to this being implemented. And I would just be really grateful if elected members are kept fully appraised of how that is going.
I'm more than happy to do that. Obviously, the decision was just taken there before Christmas. We have a number of thoughts now around some workshops for duty holders to attend during our routine audit programme. We certainly will be engaging and making sure people are well aware of the responsibilities and any changes. It's a two way process, our fire safety enforcement audits. So we're more than happy to help inform and educate for those that perhaps, you know, a bigger firm, it's much easier to have a specialist duty holder with that fire safety knowledge. So yeah, more than happy to see how we best approach this. I would suspect there will also be national support from the fire service. Our prevention and protection function will, I think, develop some resources. So we'll work hand in hand with those. But I'm certainly happy to undertake that commitment and bring back updates as we go through. And if I can get that down toward the area, again, happy to do so.
That's very much appreciated. I'm grateful for such a positive response. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Bringing councillor Flynn now.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. Just a wee bit of clarity, actually, with regards to the deliberate primary fires target, section five, with regards to, you say in your performance management that several vehicle fires, mixture of non residential and dwelling fires. It's not really clear the percentage of these for each particular subject. But the fires in motor vehicles, is that antisocial behaviour fires or actually just cars igniting? The first question, is that associated with the actual antisocial action team you have? Is that actually attributing to the benefit of trying to meet this challenging, well, you mentioned targets as Bill McPherson highlighted, very difficult and out with your control. But you've got a very challenging target here, and you're very close to your target, enemy of 60 for the, for this year. So just to have a wee bit more understanding of the breakdown of that, if you have it.
Thanks very much for your question. I can see your point there that you make, obviously, councillor Flynn. What I would say to you is that we are constrained within the parameters that are in our performance software application, which provides us with this data. And I was just reflecting when I was listening to you there on some of the previous questions on, you know, the difficulty that we actually have in gathering this information. And, you know, almost well, what's the point then of you actually capturing this when you don't have any control over it? But it is obviously important to recognise the trends. And even, you know, as I commented earlier, in my own update regarding headline indicator nine, it does give us that opportunity to look into the trends of what's actually, what's actually causing this. So we'll look at, for example, has it been the time of day? Is there any particular area of Dundee, you know, in terms of, so that enables us to then engage further with our partners and say, right, look, this is what we are noticing here on the analysis that we've got. And it's exactly the same with obviously headline indicator number 11 that you talk about there. So yeah, deliberately, deliberate primary fires, again, the main difference between a primary and a secondary fire is a primary would, you know, predominantly involve some form of structural fire. But again, it's how it's categorised within our, our performance system, which does encapsulate elements of, you know, you're talking specifics there about car fires. But we will take further analysis of that. And again, the trends which are linked in with headline indicator 12. But I will be honest with you, it can sometimes be a challenge to really drill down and get some of that, that real clarity that you're actually asking there, councillor Flynn.
Councillor, if I could just add in the, the figures there, the vehicle fires reported there are, they've been deemed to be deliberately set. So it's not accidental car, you know, car fire at the side of the road, which maybe has a number of factors. It is definitely deemed to have been deliberate.
Can I come back, Convena?
You can, councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks for that. No, thanks very much for that feedback. Just again, I think that relates back to your antisocial behaviour group and probably the work that they'll be doing going forward. And I just want to, I said, I just wanted clarity if that was part of it. So if you're saying that's the case, then it's more likely to be that. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Flynn. Well, I see no more questions. So I would like to thank Scottish Fire and Rescue for coming tonight and presenting that positive report to us and for answering members' questions. And with that, is that report noted? Thank you. Veronica, please.
Item three, Dundee Local Policing Area Quarterly Police Report, 1st of July to 30th of September 2021. You have the report for you.
Okay, we'll just invite Police Scotland to talk towards that report. Thank you.
Thanks, Convena, and good evening to everyone. It's really good to be here again. I trust everyone's okay and enjoyed some quality family time during the festive period. For information today, I'm again joined by Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, who, as you know, is the local area commander for Dundee. In terms of the policing report today, I trust that members have had the opportunity to read the report. And we are, given the extent of the detail within that and the various topics within, I would not intend to go over the full submission at this stage. The report provides performance data and associated contextual information against our local policing plan for Dundee. And it shows linkages of that to the national policing objectives, as well as where it supports the Dundee community plan. The report that's presented today covers quarter two, which is the period 1st of July to the 30th of September, however focuses on year to date data from the 1st of April to the 30th of September. As per last quarter and ahead of taking questions from members, I would again advise that this period has comparison against a period in the previous year, that as we all know, had increased pandemic restrictions. And that makes direct comparisons in some areas of the report challenging. And as advised last time, and I guess coinciding with the significantly eased restrictions that we saw across quarter one and quarter two of this year, policing responses were certainly much more aligned to the pre pandemic policing demands. And that includes further increased road usage, increased social interaction, the reopening of the licensed trade and wider commercial and local events activities, which have led to some associated increased offences. What is clear though, is as we come out of quarter two, is that we can't be complacent. And we've clearly seen a return of some restrictions. And clearly, the Covid impact is still going to be with us for some time with the new Omicron variant very much present in our minds. And I guess before opening up for questions, I also wanted in an opening, after speaking the last time I spoke ahead of the Conference of the Parties, COP26, and it's appropriate for me in my opening comments today to thank members here for their support ahead of that nationally significant event for Scotland. That was certainly very much appreciated. It's a fairly reasonable assessment to say that the policing operation at that was a success. And our officers across Tayside and from Dundee certainly did us proud, either representing their specialisms at the event itself, or crucially, in providing the essential ongoing high quality daily services that they provide to their local communities here across Dundee. So I'm certainly proud of their efforts in that regard. And again, just wanted to thank members for the support during that particularly busy period. That's it in terms of opening from myself. I would not often say anything further at this stage, but clearly more than happy as always to answer any queries that members have between myself and Ross. Thank you all.
Thank you for that introduction. And there are a few questions. So we'll start right away with Bailey Wright.
Thank you, Convena. I have two questions on that report. The first one is on serious assaults on page 38. I think the table shows a slight reduction in the numbers of serious assaults compared to the equivalent quarter last year. But the rate in Dundee is still a lot higher than Perth and Angus combined. Could you tell us what lies behind these figures? And if sufficient resources are being put into dealing with serious assaults in the city?
Thanks, Bailey Wright. I'll give a brief overview and I may bring in Chief Inspector Fitzgerald for some additional context. Certainly, any kind of serious assault is clearly a real challenge and has a massive impact on, on victims and our wider communities. It's pleasing to see the direction of travel there. It's certainly positive that we've had a reduction in crimes that I'm able to report this quarter and against our five year average. But in terms of the variance from Dundee, I think one of the key variances between Dundee and the other areas in Tayside is we have a large urban area with a quite significant licensed trade and night time economy, which undoubtedly draws some aspects in relation to the crime types. And equally, and as is often the case in instances of serious assault, is the connection to drugs, alcohol, poverty and deprivation, which unfortunately leads to circumstances that people find themselves in and these type of offences occurring. I think that, you know, that the longer term cultural change that clearly would be needed to make a real lasting effect in terms of violence, needs to be multi layered and across the full collaborative sphere, both targeting those societal type issues, you know, really focusing on, on drugs, alcohol, mental health, on poverty, on inequalities, across the full spectrum and across the full range of partners to really make some lasting impact. But from a policing perspective, we certainly apply a priority to violent crime. We apply a number of resources with a clear focus on violent crime. And we work closely with partners to make an impact in that space. And it's pleasing, as I say, to see that reduction this quarter. I don't know if Chief Inspector Fitzgerald has any further he would like to add to that.
Just very briefly, sir, for Bailey Wright, just to look at the resourcing side of things. So I think in terms of the resources we apply, we obviously have significant numbers of uniformed police officers who are engaged in those initial response phases that people see. However, sitting behind that, almost all serious assaults and robberies across the city are investigated by colleagues in proactive and reactive CID, to bring that additionality in terms of investigation and also the specialist training that sits within their area, in order to ensure that those investigations are as robust as possible. And then that kind of third tier sits with our operation Argonite and our kind of community investigation units, who are more specifically involved in looking at the vulnerability of those victims who, who are central to those crimes, to see how we can offer broader support ourselves or signpost and use the information we've gathered into other kind of local authority partners and third sector agencies. So there is that whole kind of strand of response across uniform CID and preventative kind of policing that we do bring to bear in respect of that area.
Well, that's, that's good to know. Thanks for that information. Can I ask my second question now? It's on domestic abuse on page 64. And although the rate is still higher than the national average, I note that the figures that show a decrease in the number of recorded crimes that are relating to domestic abuse, and an improved detection rate for this category, which is, which is excellent. But maybe, do you think it's because there's a real reduction? Or do you think it's because there's an under reporting because of Covid restrictions?
Thank you, Bailey Wright. And I think it's a, it's a very good question, certainly one that we've been very conscious of throughout the pandemic, where we clearly have hidden harms for people certainly being stuck behind closed doors. And that's not just a concern of the police, but it's a concern of, again, the broader partnership. And as a member of the chief officers group, something we've been really keen through third sector groups, through, you know, our protecting people arrangements, to make sure that we can both encourage reporting as far as possible, and to make sure that we protect those that are most vulnerable. And whether that be so through proactive visits or otherwise, to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we've given the options for people to come forward. We've certainly seen as a division that, that overall reduction this period, which I think is really pleasing, as you've described. But, you know, one of the points that's in the report there is that Dundee still continues to experience high levels of domestic abuse when you look at that at a rate per 10,000 population. And I think that is something which, for me, leaves domestic abuse absolutely as a key priority for policing. And you'll later hear that in the Public Protection Arrangements report as well, with that focus across the partnerships, additional remobilisation grants and monies into women's aid and Dundee's Women Rape and Sexual Abuse Centre. You'll have seen through our policing campaigns recently, such as that guy, and the various other approaches we've taken in really trying to make, you know, domestic abuse and the challenges round about it very visible, and trying to encourage as proactive a reporting as possible. And then the last thing I would, I would, I would point is, is that any instances of domestic abuse clearly reported to us are investigated with significant vigour through the application of resources that's been described by Chief Inspector Fitzgerald just a moment ago there, so that we can bring offenders, you know, through justice as quickly as possible. Hope that's helped answer your question, Bailey Wright.
Thanks very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Councillor McIrvin.
Thanks, Chair. I have a couple of questions, if you will. The first one on domestic housebreaking crime. We see in the summary report, the worrying continued increase in domestic HBs. And we're certainly sitting above the five year average as well. Reading the report, there's mention of using CCTV opportunities. Part of my question on domestic HBs are, are we using the mobile CCTV unit? And how often are we using that for preventative measures and intelligence gathering purposes? And also with the high increase in domestic HBs, where is, where is the highest concentration? If there is just one or two within the city, where are they?
Thanks councillor. I'll certainly pass on for the local elements of that question to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald in a moment. You know, whilst it's pleasing to see the reductions in the violent crime that are reported, you're absolutely right that we, we have challenges in relation to accusative crime and housebreakings has seen an increase over the period, which is clearly very concerning. And that the prevalence of these, these crimes And that the prevalence of these crimes is higher than the same period last year and is an area of focus for us with a number of proactive measures that we're taking place. And for the Dundee area, I'll let Chief Inspector Fitzgerald kind of give some commentary on that. In relation to the CCTV van though, we, for across the whole of Tayside, have a tasking mechanism that's available for that. That takes place on a daily basis where the deployment of that vehicle can be applied to the area of greatest and most prioritised concern. And we look at that alongside data as to where the best use of that vehicle can be adopted. As to its specific usages in Dundee, I'm afraid I don't have the data for that to hand. But as I say, Chief Inspector Fitzgerald might be able to give you that bit of local context. So I'll hand over to him just now.
Thanks, sir. First of all, I suppose in terms of the hotspot areas, I'll tackle that aspect first, if that's all right councillor. So for me, there's two kind of distinct parts to that question. We see housebreakings which are more sporadic and are probably more closely aligned to addiction issues and other kinds of acquisitive crime we see across the city. In those instances, they tend to follow those kind of hotspot areas for other aspects of crime, antisocial behaviour. So into the kind of Donald Street, Court Street areas, the Hilltown Maltese and Locky Maltese particularly are areas where those more sporadic and less well-planned crimes tend to occur. Now, there is a distinct kind of difference between that and some of the crime series we've seen that are linked to kind of more nationally based organised crime gangs. And when it comes to those particular kind of crimes, we tend to see properties that appear to be higher in value being targeted, properties that are closer to trunk roads to allow those more organised individuals easy access to the roads, kind of structures, in order to ensure they can leave the city as quickly as they arrive after crimes are committed. So there are two distinct kind of crime categories within the domestic housebreaking kind of bracket to draw your attention to. Now, around the mobile CCTV van particularly, when I mention CCTV opportunities in the report, we tend to find our successes around detecting housebreakings come from those cameras that are not so noticeable. So I'm looking at the private CCTV opportunities where potentially offenders wouldn't necessarily know cameras there or a ring doorbell, for example. And we do tend to use the mobile CCTV van where we want a clear kind of degree of visibility. And for the most part, my tasking around that is more linked to kind of acts of violence in the city centre area and the areas where a real strong visible presence is likely to have a significant impact. So I hope that kind of assists a little.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. My second question, Chair, is you look at the graphs that are in the report and I think the vast majority of them show the Scottish benchmark per 10,000 population. Dundee is above the Scottish benchmark and I've just mentioned domestic HBs more than double that. Linking that back with Bailey Wright's earlier question about sufficient resources. If we're continually above the Scottish benchmark in many, many crime types, be serious and violent crimes, drug offences, acquisitive crime and vandalism, et cetera, do we have sufficient resources to tackle all this?
Councillor, again, thanks very much for the question. I think, first of all, across that, it's understanding the connection between all of those crime types and those areas that clearly are in that, you know, 10,000 head of population. And it's the general root causes, that drug and alcohol addiction, mental health challenges, you know, and poverty that are often the drivers into that particular, you know, those particular crime types. And I think therefore it's not just about policing resources. In terms of the crimes we get in, I'm confident that we have the policing resources to do the investigative aspects and to do the preventative requirements to it. But in terms of the broader picture, which I suppose is how do you make that broader impact on the challenges that come across the piece? That's a whole systems type issue and that very much is where the focus is at across the collaborative of the partnership. It's not something that the police can, for example, solve alone by throwing additional policing resources into it. It very much needs, you know, work with the community, work with the local authorities, work with other emergency service responders, work with our third sector agencies. And it's the collective spread and impact on those root causes that, for me, would have the greatest impact on those crime types. Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, I don't know if you've got any additional you want to add, just answer that specifically?
That's supposed to be a selfish area, Commander. I would never say no to more resources. But ultimately, I don't have Chief Superintendent Davidson's divisional or national concern. So it's probably an easier answer for me to give. But the reality is, I think the Chief Superintendent's right, I'm confident that the offers that we have are well directed. Our priorities are correctly set. But in order to invoke a change in one of those statistics, we would really have to tackle them all collectively right across that area of kind of poverty, education and cultural change amongst our kind of children and young people as well. So if I can get more resources, I'll have them. Thanks very much. But yeah, I think the Chief Superintendent's correct. In terms of that cultural change, we need to see real improvements across a range of those statistics.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Now, Kralin councillor Duncan.
Thanks, Convenor. I've got two questions, if I can. They both relate to page 14 of the Police Report or page 44 of the Committee Papers. The first area that I want to talk about is the Barrenhill Rock Gardens. And there's been a very welcome reduction in various kinds of antisocial behaviour there. It was, you know, certainly at the beginning of lockdown, it was a really significant problem. And we had site visits with police officers, council community safety wardens and indeed residents. So it's good to see that, you know, the bad behaviour has reduced. But there was talk at these meetings about provision of CCTV. And I've raised this before the committees and thankfully, nothing's happened on it. I think it kind of ran aground on who was going to pay for it and what kind of CCTV was it going to be? The police, was it going to be the council? I think this may be a conversation that the police and the council officers maybe need to revive. And because residents would certainly be looking for an answer on that. So that's my first question.
Thanks councillor Duncan. I'll be honest, I don't personally have the probably the answer for that one. So I'll pass that straight on to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald.
Yes, just around that. So I know that question around CCTV in the Rock Garden has kind of raised its head before. I'm aware of that. So I think the discussions have been had between ourselves, the antisocial behaviour team as well, and that the reality around providing CCTV for the Rock Garden at the times those conversations were taking place would have been that the kind of tactical relocation of a camera from elsewhere just down to kind of budgetary constraints. And given the reduced number of calls to the Rock Garden, kind of agreements and decisions were taken, that probably wasn't the best use of a camera at that particular time. Now, to look at the additionality or where kind of further budget would come from does probably require a broader and refreshed conversation. So that's maybe something I can discuss with colleagues in the local authority on your behalf and come back to you. But that's hopefully gives an answer around why it's not happened so far and the decisions that were made around the use of the cameras we have. And there's perhaps another conversation to be had around kind of resourcing further cameras in the future.
Okay, I do appreciate that answer and I'm just really mindful of, I mean, we don't want it to happen. But as the weather eventually improves, you know, then it gets warmer, the nights get longer, et cetera, heading into spring. I would not like to see a resurgence of this sort of activity. So that's one thing there. Can I ask my second question, if I may, Convenor?
Just one second councillor Duncan. I think Tom Sterling was looking to come in on that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think on the issue of issues down at the Rock Garden, I think part of the response was to arrange some diversionary activities that took place during that period. And that's certainly something that the communities team would be looking at again for next summer to try and address any issues that might arise or even prevent them. So that was part of the response, I think, last year councillor Duncan, that I think was proved to be quite helpful as well.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Duncan?
No, thanks very much indeed, Tom. And I think, you know, diversionary, you know, activities are somewhat key to a lot of these issues. So I'll look forward to more of that. My second question, again, it relates to Gilmour Park. Now, in the reports, there's mention of an increase in secondary fires in Gilmour Park, which certainly chimes with what I know personally and what residents have complained about. But there's also other allegations of other sorts of behaviour in Gilmour Park. For example, alleged drug dealing and so on and so forth. Now, I mean, I don't know how accurate that is, but it's really, I'm just making a plea to the police insofar as you can spare resources to maybe, you know, sort of target Gilmour Park as much as you can. And also, I would say that to the council community safety wardens as well.
Thanks councillor. I'm pretty sure Chief Inspector Fitzgerald will pitch in. But on that point around about, you know, resources and the application towards antisocial behaviour, we would certainly encourage that where communities have concerns to definitely report that into the police, either directly or through yourselves. And the increased reporting that we get builds that bigger picture of where clear community challenges are taking place. And that then can, you know, inform the policing response. And certainly each locality and challenges across the whole of Tayside is different and can require sometimes a different type of local policing and local partner response. So you've got that assurance that, you know, the issues of antisocial behaviour, where they take place across our different communities are looked at clearly, each on their own merits and rightly so, and addressed in that way. I don't know, Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, if you've got any specific feedback on Gilmour Park?
Now councillor, all I would say around Gilmour Park, as I mentioned in the report, because we are aware of kind of emerging issues in that area. I suppose our worry would be that some of that's perhaps dispersal from other areas where effective action has taken place. But it's in the report because we have added it to our directed policing plan for that area of the city. Sergeant Kate Forbes and her team are keenly aware of the issues there. And yet, you're right, when there's secondary fires taking place because of the congregation of younger people, then other aspects of antisocial behaviour are undoubtedly kind of featuring in there as well. So there is a focus on that area, which will be delivered through into next year. And then just to pick up on your fears around the Rock Garden in terms of the weather and the impact of climate, then absolutely, we would anticipate and fear the same things as you do in that regard. And we'll be kind of keyed up and ready for it to come kind of March, April time, when we see that kind of warmer weather again. But hopefully it provides you a reassurance that the Gilmour Park is detailed within our plan and that our teams actively kind of engaged in trying to look at those issues.
Yeah, no, I'm really obliged for that qualification because I've certainly in the past told residents that indeed it has been added to your plan. So that's good. And to take up on the point mentioned there, where I always make a point of telling residents that, yes, by all means, tell me about these things, but you must report to the police. Otherwise, the police don't necessarily have a record. So thanks for that.
Councillor Richardson is next.
Thanks, Convenor. I was really happy and pleased to see that on page 31 of your report and 63, page 63 of the council papers, that you've given us some context around the recent spiking incidents. And I'm really pleased that there's been quite a lot of work going on at high level and also locally. I wonder though, given that it is kind of, we're into the new year, whether or not you've had, you could give us any kind of update in terms of the, your assessment of the scale of the issue in this city? Because there has been a few reports in the media and it's all pretty horrifying to read, you know. And I think I'm looking for some assurance that it isn't an everyday occurrence and it's not happening in every establishment in the city centre.
Well, thanks for the question councillor. I think I can give you that assurance. The type of reports in relation to spiking generally are not commonplace. We did experience, and as you've mentioned there, has been in the media, a particular peak of reports of instances around about either spiking by injection or more often by application of a drug to a drink. That peak certainly was with us in the late summer. We don't believe that any of those instances are linked and that peak was a peak that took place nationally. So it was experienced in each of the main cities predominantly, with Dundee clearly being one of them. In terms of assurance, we have thankfully seen a reduction since that peak in the late summer and certainly a significant reduction in the number of reports that come forward. What I would say is that, you know, we're not always able to determine the reasons why a perpetrator would carry out an assault in that way. But I would certainly give that assurance that every one of those reports that is made to us is taken seriously. People should be able to go out for a night out without the fear of being spiked. You know, thankfully, we're not seeing large numbers of reports coming in. And then it's certainly that volume has reduced. We have a number of inquiries that remain ongoing from some of those reports that have come in. And we've been working, as you'll have seen with some of the proactive releases from ourselves, that we've been working with a range of partners, both locally and nationally, to ensure that our licence premises are safe places for all. And that's either through delivery of bystander training, wider awareness raising and providing direct support to victims or persons that may become victims in this space. So we've had some really positive engagement across Dundee with student bodies, universities and third sector and others. But I can certainly, in answer to your question, can give you that assurance. And we've clearly come through the busy festive period as well, increased high visibility patrols from our own perspective and thankfully not seen a return to the peak of reports that we had late summer.
Thank you. That's good to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Richardson. Councillor McCready was next.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. I mean, I want to follow up on what councillor Richardson said. I've got a share of her concerns, which, you know, I think she's expressed extremely well there. And I know that in the report, it does talk about partnership working. But I think it would be good to know, you know, what work is being done by the police. And obviously, you know, the council as the licensing authority has got some role in this as well. So I just wonder if I could get some, a little bit more detail about that. Because I think, as has been said, you know, people going out in Dundee should know that everything has been done to protect them. And you know, you should be able to go out for a night out in Dundee and enjoy yourself without fear of your drink getting spiked or being, you know, being spiked yourself, you know. So I think, and also I think it's important to know that if unfortunately there were any incidents, and it's good to hear the previous answer, if there were any incidents of spiking that occurred, that the full force of the law will be used against the perpetrators. So just maybe a little bit more on what's being done for the council and law enforcement to work together.
So I suppose there's a different, a number of different angles to that. I suppose firstly, where a report is taken, there's clearly the police-led investigation, which is thorough in a number of angles and involves very much not just the direct seeking of evidence from witnesses, the look at what forensic evidence may be available and the look at CCTV, work within licence premises, if that indeed is the reported location for the offence towards pursuing offenders and making sure that we can absolutely bring people to justice where there is offenders identified. It's the preventative space which is really key in terms of this and really trying to give that assurance that Dundee and all of our cities across Scotland are safe places for people to go out. And that, you know, engagement has been consistent across the country, not just locally. So the bystander awareness training that's been described into licence premises helps for staff, for stewards, for others to understand what signs to look out for, what suspicious behaviour to be careful of. what suspicious behaviour to be cognizant of, and to be able to point that out and look at protective measures clearly in advance of crimes occurring and to get reports into the police appropriately. You mentioned the, you know, the council's licensing aspect of things. If and as the police would have any concerns around about any particular premises or issues in that regard, then we would, as a matter of course, in any concern, clearly report that in accordingly and look to work very closely with the council, as well as the premises themselves, to try and make improvements. And, you know, I mentioned earlier on that it isn't just around about the licensed sector. It's work with students, work with universities, work with people that frequent our public areas and clearly other supporting agencies, our street wardens and other people in terms of that bystander type of awareness raising in particular. I trust that that answers the question, councillor.
Well, I think that's really helpful. I think it's good to know that it has been taken particularly seriously because I think it is something that, you know, I think it would be good to get the stats, as Councillor Richardson said. But I think, you know, it's an issue that is clearly leading to an element of fear amongst particularly, I would say, young women in the city. But I'm sure it's not just exclusive to young women. But I think that's clearly would appear from the reports and things like that to be one of the target groups for this offence. That's really helpful.
Thank you, Councillor McCready. Councillor Scott, I think you are next.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convena. Yeah, can I just ask about page 44 in your report? Page 77 on the committee reports, that'll be about allegations against the police. I see complaints received are down and allegations received are down. But in amongst the allegations, it says quality of service allegations is up 119%. I just wonder whether you may want to elaborate upon that, please?
Yeah, thanks councillor. Just bringing the page up for that. The, well, it is pleasing that the overall number of complaints received is down. And as you say, allegations are down. The categorisations of any complaints that are received into the service for us have consistently remained the same. For quality of service, as opposed to an allegation against police regulations, it would tend to indicate, trying to think of some examples of them. Examples could be, you know, in relation to the time taken, for example, to update on an inquiry. Could be a quality of service allegation as opposed to an on-duty allegation, which may be a roundabout specific incivility, for example, of an officer. So there is that increase there. I have asked for a report to break that down for my own purposes because when I saw the data coming in for this report, I wanted to see that breakdown to understand what areas and whether there is any common trends in that space because it's very much the lower end of allegations that come in. I don't mean to say lower end as in, you know, dismissing it, but it's very much service interpretations as opposed to the more serious end of allegations. So whilst it's pleasing to see that the more serious end of allegations are reduced, I equally share your concerns, but I'm afraid I don't have the breakdown of trend data for it. But have asked for that. Can come back to you separately to answer that.
Yeah, well, thanks. Thanks very much for that. Obviously, on looking at the best figures, it does look a bit concerning that it is up by 119%. So more of a breakdown would be quite useful, I think. And let's hope that next time you come back before us, it's gone back down again. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. Bailey Keenan, you are next.
Thanks, Convena. It's in relation to emergency service assaults. And I obviously see that the numbers are going up and the detection rate is excellent, and I'm pleased at that. I think that anybody going to their work shouldn't be attacked in any way whatsoever. But I have got a question in relation to what are the services that are counted as an emergency service? Because I know it's police and fire, but ambulance services are deemed to be an essential service and not emergency. And some are paramedics and technicians equally get assaults and threats and abuse at their job as well. And of course, you know, through the pandemic, we've got to look at the amount of shop workers, bus drivers and many other people that should be able to go to their work. So I'm wondering what's in the figure in relation to the emergency services? And how do we go about tracking data on other issues in the city? Because, you know, many, many people through this pandemic have been required to keep the country functioning and deliver vital services. And no doubt, they are getting equal amounts of abuse, you know, in particular shopkeepers, bus drivers and the like, perhaps even some over-owned staff.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. I can confirm that in terms of that category that you see listed in the report, that that relates to the blue light emergency service workers. So it doesn't include that wider space around about, you know, shop workers and bus drivers and other key public service personnel that deliver clearly to our communities. Any assault on any, you know, public service worker that is clearly there delivering a service to communities is deplorable. And it's a one that we clearly want to, you know, not see happen. It's absolutely dealt with at the, you know, at the highest level in terms of investigation and bringing offenders to justice. I am, you know, concerned at every report that comes in to me of an emergency service worker assault because these are people that are coming out to do jobs for communities and shouldn't expect to have that when they come in. But specifically in terms of your question around about the capturing of additional areas, I would have to go away and have a look within our crime recording system as to what mechanisms we may have under common assault to be able to determine any sort of additional factors such as shop work. There's new legislation around about shop workers which may be able to assist in terms of crime type charges. But just in terms of that broader question of assaults, I would need to go and see what we could do with our data and come back to you separately with an answer on that.
Thanks very much for that. Can I just clarify in relation to the blue light emergency services? Because as I say, the ambulance service would deem to be blue light, but then would be deemed to be an essential service as far as the government's concerned. So they operate the same as yourself, you know, they kind of put the same demands on them as they can with yourself as an emergency service. So, you know, I'm wondering whether the ambulance service assaults are accounted in this. As much as I would obviously like, welcome that you could probably bring back some other data in the future because I think it's vitally important that we have a good picture of what's going on in Dundee. So as that, you know, we would want issues that, or any kind of assault like that addressed for Dundee. I have another question that I'd like to come back on as well.
Councillor Keenan, I'll bring Ross in. Unless I'm ill-informed, my understanding is it's all the blue light services and that would include ambulances as well. The numbers that's reported there, 183 for quarters one and two. The vast majority of that, though, do relate to police officers. It's thankfully a small minority that relate to our fire service and ambulance service colleagues. But Ross, just in case I've got that wrong?
No, I can confirm. So there is an emergency services marker attached to each charge around that kind of work. And it is always applied to colleagues in the ambulance service as well. So those statistics do incorporate ambulance personnel. Just in support of what Chief Superintendent Davidson is saying, I'll certainly confirm for Bailey Keenan a kind of, a look at how we can maybe differentiate between assaults and those who are volunteering or shopkeepers that may be difficult within the nuances of our crime and recording system. But I'll certainly do my level best to come back to you with some more statistics around that. But what I would say is, the report demonstrates a 6% reduction in common assaults, which will undoubtedly capture some of those individuals you're talking about. And I can confirm that's moved on to being a reduction of around 11% in comparison to last year's figures as we speak today. So that statistic is moving in the right direction, but I can completely understand why. At that time, we were asking volunteers to step up in man and women kind of vaccine centres and things, for example. Why would we maybe want to try and get that kind of more nuanced information? And I will do my best to try and do that for you.
Thanks. That's very much appreciated. The other question is in relation to page 59.
Just before you come in there, sorry, Bailey Keenan, I was just going to advise that Councillor Flynn's will be the last comment. I've seen nobody else want to come in and indicate, so I'm going to make Councillor Flynn the last question. So thank you.
I'm reading your list.
No, you're allowed to come in, Bailey Keenan. I was just advising that there are no more questions after Councillor Flynn.
Okay, sorry. The other one is in relation to page 59 and the reduction, which is welcome, in the drugs and drink driving episodes that would happen in the city. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, that's kind of been the same over the next period, which would be towards Christmas. So what's the flavour for what's happening at the moment? And as to whether that's a change in behaviour, perhaps in any way influenced by the amount of people that have perhaps put a bar in their back garden, you know, rather than, you know, go to the pub, take their car, then jump in and go home, you know? So I'm wondering whether there's a feeling for a change of behaviour that might well see that as a crime reducing going forward.
Thanks councillor. I think, you know, your observation, it may be that COVID and the change to lifestyles has had an impact on this. But the reporting period in question that we come to today has seen also some significant periods of campaign, some real increased focus on the roads from policing and from other partners. And that proactivity and stops and high visibility activity, I would like to think draws about deterrent as well. So I am pleased to see the reduction in figures in drink driving as I'm equally happy to see no fatalities this period and a reduction in, you know, non-serious injuries. But as was reported by fire service colleagues as well, we've still got that connection with, you know, an 18% increase in serious injuries. And it's thankfully, in those cases, limited involving drink and drugs. But it's the proactivity that I would certainly suggest we're going to continue. We want to apply a real focus on the dangers around about drug and drink driving. The festive period undoubtedly brings additional challenges. I don't have the latest figures as we've gone into this most recent quarter. However, the Omicron and the sort of changed restrictions and the differences that's made then and across our towns may well have had a continued impact, which you kind of allude to anyway. So I don't have the figures at hand for the latest quarter, but I see Chief Inspector Fitzgerald's hands gone up, so he may have.
Just to support that, Chief Superintendent Davidson, so as of today, we've seen now a 13% reduction in the number of drink drive offences recorded across the city. So that demonstrates a continuing kind of improving trend from the end of Q2, if that helps in terms of our numbers.
Thanks very much for that.
Thank you, Billy Keenan. So Providence of Doubt Committee, we have following Bailey Keenan. Councillor Malone, Bailey Scott and Councillor Flynn. He was the last on that list. Everyone has been noted, so we're going with Councillor Malone.
Okay, thank you for that, Convena. First of all, thank the Police Scotland for the work they do in my ward and the Locky Ward, and particularly around the areas of what will be coming to antisocial behaviour and particularly drug offences. So I continue to kind of offer my thanks for the work that's done there. I'm looking at the report on page 33 that looks at rape, and it's something similar to, in a way, to Billy Wright's comments. I've spoken about these reports on rape in a number of occasions, a number of committees. And we've always seen a situation where the crimes were increasing and the detection rate was decreasing. We seem to have a quite significant turnaround in that. I would say it was welcome, but obviously we wouldn't welcome the fact that there are that amount of crimes in the first place. We should have zero rapes in Dundee. I'm sure everybody in the committee would agree with that one. But in previous committees, what we've been assured of, the kind of anecdotal narrative, was that the reason for increasing numbers of crimes was that women were feeling more confident in the system and felt more able to report that. And I guess I'm asking for kind of like an assurance that there isn't a reversal of that, particularly because we've had some quite high level cases in other parts of the UK. And whether or not we're seeing a trend where people have lost confidence in the system. So I guess that was kind of a first question. I've got another question later on. But if you could maybe just kind of give me your analysis or give us an analysis of where you think these figures, why these figures, why this trend is happening in the first place?
Now, thanks councillor Malone. And, you know, I think it's right to highlight that many of the offences we see in relation to rape, thankfully, the vast majority have occurred significantly out with the actual reporting period and are certainly classed as non-recent. So that the volume of recent rapes we see, you know, continue to be relatively low in nature, which is good. But any rape, any assault of a woman, as described when I was talking about domestic abuse earlier on, is something that it is deplorable, is something that we focus on. And I think the answer I probably gave a bit earlier on around about that continued increased work with the multi-agency space, with partners to encourage that reporting into us. I do have a confidence across the partnership space that we've got those connections in with our communities and we've got that high rate of contact. I think the swing that we see here, that there has genuinely been a reduction in reporting. Like you, that does raise the question of, are we missing something here? And I think that that then redoubles that focus on looking to make sure that we're, making sure that we're contactable and able to be engaged in the nature that we would hope to make sure that we can address and support people in this regard. The detection rate swinging, often what we find, because the majority of the cases of rape that we have are non-recent in nature, inquiries can be quite protracted. So sometimes you get swings in the detection rate. And that can be that, you know, through quarter one, we maybe have a number of inquiries that remain outstanding. Into quarter two, we maybe are able to draw a number of those to conclusion. So it helps to swing that rate up, which is clearly pleasing to see. Of the rape inquiries that we have outstanding, we do have positive lines of inquiries on them. And I would certainly hope for some further positivity as we move forward.
Yep. Well, thank you for that. And let's just hope that's the trend that's going to continue, where we see the detection rate getting up to nearer 100%. But obviously, welcome the increase in detection. I think that's really good. And I think people will get some kind of assurance about that. My second question, you probably are not surprised, looks at antisocial behaviour on page 45, where we see a significant increase in antisocial behaviour activity in the Locky Ward. And one, I was just trying to see if we get some more intelligence from you of why you think those figures are as bad and they're bucking the trend of the rest of the city. And secondly, I was going to ask about multi-agency working in this area because obviously we've got the police, we've got fire services, we've got community wardens, we've got antisocial behaviour team in housing. And I'm just wondering what the multi-agency activity, are there any multi-agency activities in this area? And particularly targeted at Locky because we are seeing, as I said, a significant difference. I mean, the swing from the highest to the lowest rate of antisocial behaviour is quite significant when you look at it. And about 20% of all antisocial behaviour cases actually come from the Locky Ward. So I just wondered if there was that kind of scope for multi-agency working or whether that's taking place at the moment?
Well, councillor Malone, I can confidently say that that multi-agency working does take place. But to give you the specifics of that, I think it's only right that I bring Chief Inspector Fitzgerald in for that very local context.
No, thank you, sir. Those statistics around Locky are ones that we are looking at carefully. I mean, the specific hotspot areas are absolutely around Locky High Street and into the multi-stores, the end of South Roads. So those areas particularly drive our statistics fairly significantly. So I guess to give that confidence, we have a kind of a fairly rigid process around repeat caller initiatives, making sure that each officer, when they attend and address, is well aware of the history of all previous incidents so that each incident isn't simply being dealt with on a standalone basis. We've got kind of daily tasking meetings, including kind of conversations with colleagues in the antisocial behaviour team, which I'm which I'm sure they may touch on as they kind of present the report just after this is concluded. So that daily contact is there to tease out the most complex and difficult cases, to ensure that we are working hand in hand with our colleagues in the local authority to bring to bear the resources that are required. We clearly have not cracked it for the Lockie Ward area yet. We did have elected members briefing specific to Lockie kind of planned just before Christmas, albeit I think they are to be kind of repeated into the new year at a time which is perhaps easier for councillors to come along to. So we can maybe delve into the kind of weeds of the Lockie area, those specific briefings. But I guess my reassurance to you is that we understand the problem, we understand where the problems are and are working very closely with colleagues in the local authority to tackle that as best we can. And we will certainly persevere with that into the new year and bring all that information to those specific briefings over kind of coming weeks.
That's really helpful. And it gives an opportunity for wider and broader engagement in that process as well. So thank you for that, because the thing that really troubled me was the rise in neighbourhood disputes. Because you'll know yourself that where you've got a neighbour dispute, that's sometimes a relationship that's, you know, ended for the remaining time that people are together. So thanks for that. And I'll be certainly attending the briefings to kind of give you my intelligence of what I get reported to me in terms of the numerous concerns raised by constituents. But thank you for the multi-agency stuff.
Thank you for that councillor Malone. I believe Elaine Sverland would like to come in and just add a little bit to that.
Thank you, convener. And thank you councillor Malone for your question. Just to reassure you, in addition to that partnership working with agencies such as Police Scotland, there is also close working across our services within the local authority as well. So you mentioned housing, but housing, our community safety teams and environment teams all work very, very closely together and share information to make sure that we have a comprehensive and joined up approach to tackling these issues.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Bailey Scott.
Thank you. I have a couple of road safety questions I'd like to ask please. The first one is in relation to electric scooters. I asked a question at the last meeting about what was being done in respect of those. And I noticed in quarter two, there was a leaflet drop across the various wards about the antisocial behaviour use of scooters and motorbikes. It was, I noticed after Christmas, it was quite mild days and there was an awful lot more e-scooters out and about. And I just wanted to ask whether there will be another leaflet drop across the areas quite soon into this new year to make sure that the message goes out about the safe use of electric scooters. And I would have been interested to have a copy of the leaflet that was being put out as well, just so I could see what was being said about them. So if I could get a copy of that, that would be helpful. And my second question I wanted to ask was in relation to Operation Cedar and the various campaigns that you've had in respect of road safety. And it talks about one of the challenges you face are the driving habits of vulnerable road users. Now, I know a vulnerable road user is someone who has got less crash protection, such as a pedestrian or a cyclist or a motorcyclist. But I'm not sure what you mean by the driving habits of vulnerable road users. And I just wanted to let me know what falls into that classification.
Thanks Bailey Scott. Hopefully, I'll answer both of those for you. Certainly in relation to electric scooters, you'll be well aware, and I know we spoke about this the last time, about the challenges of off-road vehicle usage, in fact, across the whole of the Dundee area and beyond. And in the report, we certainly make reference to Operation Challenge, which was the policing response that was put in around about that. And I don't know if you had the chance to see some of the local media just over the past couple of days in that respect. So, you know, off-road vehicle usage is both dangerous and irresponsible, particularly when used in pedestrianised areas and really does present a challenge to our communities. It very much has been an area of focus, as you know, and we've looked at resolution and action. We've certainly gone from a hundred and ten calls at a peak in the summer, seen that significantly reduce down to forty in November and then further down again, which I'm really pleased to see. We've had twenty seven bikes seized, that includes electric scooters, and fifty three people identified and reported for relevant road traffic related offences. And, you know, within that has been the proactive action around about, as you say, leaflet drops. And I'm quite sure that we can probably get a copy of that leaflet to you. I'll see the nod of my colleague on the screen there, so we can get that sorted, so you can get a copy. And certainly, you know, for that proactivity going forward, we're not resting on our laurels because the numbers have reduced quite significantly. We expect that as we certainly get back into lighter nights, that it may be that we see some challenges again. So I think it's about always forward looking and making sure that we can stay on top of these issues going forward. I hope that helps to answer the first part of question. Yeah, okay, great. In relation to driving habits for vulnerable road users, that's vulnerable road users in terms of vehicle drivers as much as it is non-vehicle drivers. And we would categorise those that are vulnerable using vehicles as being those that are less experienced drivers. For example, young drivers who become clearly vulnerable due to that lack of experience on the road and lack of experience in handling vehicles and circumstances that appear in front of them. So there's challenges that will always be the case in terms of younger road users from the perspective of wanting to educate, wanting to inform, wanting to increase their awareness around about clearly the dangers of using vehicles on a road. And equally, vulnerable road users can also include, you know, those that maybe haven't driven a vehicle for a long time. That's been the case through lockdown periods and some of our older drivers too, just by nature of slower reaction times and suchlike. I hope that helps answer that question on the cat, please.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. I see Chief Inspector Fitzgerald maybe just want to come in with some additional context as well.
Okay. So that's right, it's just very briefly around the leafleting. It's just to highlight that some of the leafleting activity is really concentrated on through our kind of Police Scotland youth volunteers who meet regularly and do a lot of those leaflet drops for us. We find that through using that kind of group of teens to do all of those leaflets, we actually find a really kind of positive response around the kind of peer activity that comes from that in terms of providing that kind of responsible use of electric scooters and kind of off-road bikes. So it's not just simply a case of police officers engaged in that activity. It's a real kind of use of our diversionary activity through that project to also try and make a difference on young people.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks convener. One of the problems we're waiting so long is your question eventually gets asked. So thanks Bailey Scott, you got in there quickly with regards to electric scooters and motorbikes. I think Operation Challenge has been a relatively good success. I'm sure you'd agree with that. But again, I'm like Bailey Scott, I'm a bit concerned as the lighter evenings come in that this misuse across the city, and it is across the city, is addressed. And I think just look for the assurance from yourselves, if that's okay, that the officers will approach people on electric scooters especially. And I can understand bikes, it's very difficult to catch them. And I think you're doing a great job. You've got twenty seven, I think you said there, chief inspector or chief superintendent. And I think it's important that we actually address this issue, because it really is a serious issue. The scooters is equally as bad. And I think, could you just remind us of the law on electric scooters with regards to being on pavements and on roads? Is it legal, is it not, to be on a public highway and a public path? Would that be correct? Or am I mistaken?
Yeah, so it's illegal to utilise off-road vehicles in, you know, in places and on roads, on pathways or otherwise. And there's various road traffic offences that would apply to, you know, whether it be scooters, whether it be a quad bike, whether it be a scrambler motorbike or one of these little mini miniature motorcycles that you see. To give you an exact piece of legislation would be difficult, because as each circumstance, you know, is taken on its own merits. But certainly, there's been fifty three people over the period of Operation Challenge that have been identified and reported for associated road traffic offences and/or where we don't have a direct statutory offence, a consideration of additional offences. So that may fall into the antisocial behaviour arena or common law. So there's always that consideration. And in terms of that assurance going forward, you know, I hopefully indicated it in responses to Bailey Scott there, that, you know, we're already looking ahead to those lighter nights coming in, because we don't want to rest on our laurels of a successful operation. Operation Challenge, we know that it is highly likely that there will be a return to increased usage again. So we need to be absolutely ready for that coming round.
Yep. Thank you very much for that. And I think that reassurance is welcome. Can I just add one more thing? A bit of thanks for your support with regards to the school speech project, which is up in Fintre, which we are as a policy for the council. And we're going to progress that. And I just like, we can't do it without your support. So I just like to thank you and your teams in that area for what you've done so far. Thank you.
Thanks councillor.
Thank you for that councillor Flynn. There are no further questions. So I would like to thank Police Scotland for their attendance tonight and answering the many and varied questions from elected members. So with that, is that report noted? Thank you. Veronica.
Thank you. Item four, antisocial behaviour, first of July to thirtieth of September twenty twenty one, this report is also for noting.
Okay, I saw councillor Short.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank officers. The noise app, which is in the penultimate paragraph of page three, I found it in the local government information unit and they sussed it out. And obviously, it's gone to trial. My question is, there was a wee bit of ambiguity when it came to the way that it's written. It talks about RSLs using the app as well as ourselves. But I wasn't quite sure if that was RSLs within Dundee, so working across the city? Or are we just using the app for ourselves at the moment?
Thank you. Elaine, would you like to come in or Tom address that one?
Convener, I was going to ask Graham Mackenzie, who's on the call, the service manager for this area, to come in and answer that question.
Good evening. Thanks Elaine. Thank you convener. Councillor Short, the RSLs have their own antisocial behaviour teams. And I suspect the press coverage that you may be referring to is picking up on the fact that some of the other RSLs are using either the same app or a very similar app. That having been said, I'm not aware locally of there being much choice there. I think this is quite an innovative product. And I strongly suspect that if there is coverage to that effect, they are taking that up. But the procurement exercise that we have undergone is for Dundee City Council's antisocial behaviour team to use. Thank you.
So if it's okay for me to come in with a supplementary quickly, can I just ask if it's possible to basically have the conversations with the various RSLs? If it is successful, then hopefully it may be something that they would want to do as well. Because I'm sure everybody would agree that we get as much in from people who live in RSLs as we do from council tenants. So it would be really good if everybody had the same set of tools available to support them. I'm sure we'd agree.
Yep, Graham, your hands up.
Thank you convener. Yes councillor Short, there is a forum whereby Gillian Lam, the team leader, meets with the leaders from the RSL's antisocial behaviour team. So I'll pick up with Gillian on that tomorrow, make sure that that's shared across. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bailey Wright.
Okay, thank you. I obviously welcome this report. I'm a big fan. I know that you're going to have briefings with the warden. It was mentioned by the police earlier tonight, you know, to let elected members know what was going on in their areas. But I was wondering how it all went. And do you have any feedback from the sessions? And would you be planning to do more of this type of thing in the future?
Now, Tom, would you like to address that one? Thank you.
Yep. Thanks convener. I think at the last committee, when we discussed antisocial behaviour, we did say for these three wards where antisocial behaviour shows as, you know, the highest numbers of complaints come from, we would organise briefing. So we did organise some briefings. And the ones that went ahead, I think, were successful and informative for the elected members that attended. What we were trying to do in those briefings was give a bit of detailed information about those wards. And also, really what councillor Malone touched on, just to open that out and demonstrate that there's there is a lot of activity that goes on beyond really what our team can investigate and how they link in with partners, whether that be police or whether that be, you know, the community teams in terms of the youth work, diversity work that they do. So I think they were well received in terms of that information. And we were able to go into a little bit more detail about each of the wards. So I think it was a useful exercise and one we were happy to repeat during the course of this year. I don't think it's something we would want to do, you know, every month or so, but certainly a couple of times a year would be something that I think it would be useful to do to give updated information.
That's good to hear actually, Tom. And I think it's fair enough every six months, as long as we're kept up to date with things. I think you're doing a good job there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed convener and grateful for the report, useful as always. My concern is really around the noise issues. And I concur with councillor Short with regard to initiatives like the noise app. I think that's very much to be welcomed. I have, it's unsurprising that in my own ward and indeed in others, that noise nuisance is the biggest single total. In the West End, it's eighty percent of the antisocial behaviour statistics that are in this report. My question's really around clear up rate and specifically about the mix of age groups, in particular housing. And when we brought in the concept of amenity housing, the principle of trying to let harder to let sheltered housing in principle was a good one. But I've had one sheltered area in my own ward, which quite frankly, had very little in the way of noise nuisance type issues pre that and has now had a number. And I'm grateful, I have to say, to the head of housing and communities, who's agreed to do a review of thirty amenity lets to see if that has an impact on these particular statistics. My concern really is about the mixes of ages and lifestyles. It's interesting to note that the particular sheltered housing area I am alluding to is the very one where he actually met with myself and tenants at the time we brought in amenity housing. Because they had concerns about exactly that, the mix of age groups. So I'm just really wondering, is the mix of age groups, and I'm particularly concerned about where we have elderly residents in sheltered housing, is that a factor? And also on a wider question, clearly in this, we have statistics about, you know, the number of cases. What's the sort of long-term clear up rate in relation to noise nuisance issues? Because the bottom line for it is, and I'm very grateful for the proactive action of the antisocial behaviour team, but the bottom line on it is, how do, you know, what success do we have in actually permanently clearing up these particular noise nuisance related issues?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I don't know if David or Elaine want to come in on that one.
Thank you convener. I think the issue around clashes of lifestyle, I think, is what Bailey McPherson's referring to, that can happen as a result of That can happen as a result of different age groups is something that is certainly worthy of looking into further and more than happy to, with Mr Sterling and Mr Simpson, just to have a look at, you know, what that might look like in terms of how it translates into complaints that come in, particularly around noise. In terms of the clear up rates, it's not something I'm aware of that we capture, but it's maybe something that we can, we can look at a snapshot and we can probably give some information if we can interrogate our figures further. But I don't think it's something we routinely capture, but it's maybe something that we can do a one off interrogation to give you a flavour of that clear up rate. Maybe Mr Sterling wants to add to that.
Yeah, I think that's probably right in terms of the statistics, but the team do, will keep cases open for some time until they, you know, reach a conclusion. Sometimes it's not possible to get the information or the evidence that we would need. And yes, I would say in some cases that leaves, you know, issues as far as the people involved, they might just look at it as unresolved, but obviously there's a limit to what the team can do. And what I would say, as we've tried to say in the statistics as well, in those noise complaints that we're reporting, there's a huge range in what they entail. I mean, that could be, it could be as simple as someone, you know, not liking their neighbour's TV being turned up too loud, which can, you know, be, well, it could be reasonably straightforward to resolve or not, depending on people's attitudes, to, you know, to perhaps someone having regular noisy late night parties. So there is a full range within those statistics.
And thanks very much to both Mrs Furley and Mr Sterling for these responses. I appreciate the challenge of capturing the sort of clear up rate, if you like, but I think some interrogation of that would be helpful. Because the bottom line on this is, what we want is where there is a legitimate noise nuisance complaint that it actually gets successfully resolved where possible. I understand the challenges and I understand the perception of noise on the part of one household may be different than the perception of noise on the part of another. But nonetheless, and that's why I wanted to highlight the issue of households of varying age groups, particularly where in sheltered areas, it can frankly be prevented by sensitive letting. And I think sensitive letting is really necessary in relation to sheltered areas where we want to ensure the best possible quality of life for our elderly citizens. But as I say, I'm very grateful for the responses. Any information in relation to interrogation of, you know, capturing the, the sort of, for want of a better phrase, clear up rate would be really appreciated. And I'm grateful to officers for their very helpful responses. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Bailey McPherson. Councillor Smith, you are next.
Thank you. It's actually, it's more of a comment than a question I have. I attended the briefing, the antisocial behaviour briefing specifically for Lochie just prior to the Christmas holidays. And I really just wanted to say thanks to the officers for taking the time. It was really informative and gave me the opportunity to ask specific questions relating to the ward and how matters are dealt with. And I felt it was very well put together and organised. And if you do hold more, I would encourage everybody from the related wards to attend and have their opportunity to have questions answered. So thanks.
Thank you for that, councillor Smith. I'm sure your comments are welcome by officers who are putting a lot of work to put together those briefings. So thank you for that. I see no further questions on this report. So with that, is it agreed? Thank you. Veronica, please.
Item five, leadership of public protection arrangements. This report is for noting.
Bailey Wright, please.
Thank you, convener. I know that you've had a long night, but I think it just shows you how important the elected members see this committee. So I'm quite sure you'll be happy that you're getting loads of questions tonight. I have three short ones in this. If I do them separately, I'll be quick with it. Okay, the first one is section 4.3.3 on page 88. I think it's very positive to see that the investment in COVID remobilisation monies has had such a significant impact on reducing waiting times for services that are provided by Dundee Women's Aid and Women's Rape and Sexual Abuse Centre. And I think that they're doing a first class job. However, these are short term monies to the end of March this year. And after this period, can we expect to see the waiting list rise again or will there be more money?
I see the chief executive has his hand up, as does Catherine, but I'll let the chief executive in first. Thank you.
Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey Wright for the question. I think the additional investment from the one off COVID monies has been extremely positive as the report has outlined. At this point, there is no additional funding that we're aware of, but as we approach the council's budget, obviously we will take into consideration any one off monies that have been deployed and versus the outcomes and the priorities. And that will be a matter for committee to decide when we are setting the budget. The other thing that I would say is that there has been additional monies that have been released from different sources. So I know that the Violence Against Women partnership are looking at alternative sourcing of funding to ensure continuity and that we can maintain that level of performance, given there has been help and support to some of the most vulnerable people within the city.
Catherine, before I let Bailey Wright back in, were you wanting still to come in?
Yeah, just to supplement what the chief executive has said, obviously the report details that RASAC have actually been successful in securing match funding on the basis of the remobilisation monies provided to them by the council and health and social care partnership. So they have been able to secure funding for the 2022, 23 financial year and that should continue to impact on the reduction in waiting times. And although women's aid have not been able to secure similar funding, they have used the funding that's been made available to support some redesign of the way that they provide a duty response service and intake services around their provision. And they intend to retain some of those redesigns into the following financial year. And they believe that that will continue to have an impact on waiting times. So it's enabled them to do some redesign, which will have that longer term impact.
Well, that is good news, Catherine. I'm pleased to hear that. And thanks, Greg, for the update. Because I'm just worried in case they do such a good job that it falls short, but if secured for another year, then that's fine. And section 4.4.2 on page 90. When can elected members expect to see the findings of the children at risk of harm inspection report as in section? I noted in section 4.4.3 that one of the areas that local partners have identified for improvement is about supporting young people. And we have heard a lot of that recently in recent months in the media about the impact of the pandemic on mental health and wellbeing of young people. I wonder if you could tell us a bit more about that, about what's planned, the planned improvements in this area, if you don't mind.
Catherine, you want to come back in on that one? Thank you.
I can update on the inspection report and then I think Glenn Lloyd would be able to respond to the point that Bailey Wright raised about improvements around young people. So in relation to the Cairn Inspector, Joint Inspection of Services for Children at Risk of Harm in Dundee, the inspection report will be published by the Cairn Inspector tomorrow morning. And we are working across the partnership to bring forward a report to the Policy and Resources Committee at the end of February that will detail the inspection findings, the improvement activity that's already going on in relation to those, but also how we've incorporated those findings into a refresh of the Child Protection Committee's delivery plan and the Transforming Public Protection Programme. So there'll be further details to come to elected members and to other governance groups across the partnership towards the end of February. And I'll pass on to Glenn in relation to the point about young people and mental health.
Yeah, thank you, Bailey Wright, and thank you. Thank you, Catherine. And just to confirm, Bailey Wright, first of all, the table at paragraph 4.3 is a very brief overview of the conclusions of our own self assessment submitted to the Cairn Inspector as part of our position statement in advance of the final report being published. And obviously, in that context, work was already being progressed across a number of areas and if not progressed, planned to start particularly, as we say, in relation to young people and mental health. And in relation to young people, I think we said at a recent committee meeting in response to a question from councillor Mara, that we plan to start a review of our whole partnership approach towards vulnerable adolescents. We still do intend to do that. In fact, that review will start this very month. As part of that, as the report says, we will be actively exploring the possible implementation of contextual safeguarding, which, as you'll know, extends traditional child protection risk categories of physical, sexual, emotional abuse and neglect to risk to young people in the community. We're carrying out a review of our care and risk management protocol, which relates to young people who present a risk of harm to others. And very often they have mental health problems, which relates to that risk of harm to others. And it's possible, if not likely, that from that review, from those developments, we will have a co-located multidisciplinary team, for instance. It's possible, if not likely, that they will focus on the age range of 14 to 21. And it's possible, if not likely, that that will involve targeted joint training, that that new team and beyond in relation to the key skills required to work with vulnerable adolescents, with the aim being in relation to all of that, obviously, to have very clear processes in place and good practice applied consistently, both within the council and in fact right across the partnership. Obviously, that work relates to mental health. Very often, vulnerable young people have mental health problems. But building on that, as again, we recently outlined to elected members in the briefings on mental health, the inspection coincided with the launch of the TRIC emotional mental health and wellbeing strategy, which includes a mental health toolkit, which is designed to equip staff to identify and respond to different types of concern. We're working as a partnership on the implementation of a trauma informed practice workforce development strategy. We're embedding, as you know, counselling in schools, delivering a range of recently commissioned services from the third sector on mental health problems and working with CAMHS on the possible development of a task sharing model. Just to confirm as well, that all those supports will be available from the newly centralised FORT system, which actually is one of the many features commented on positively by the inspectors, as you'll see when the report is published tomorrow. And as you can see from the report in front of you there, mental health is affected by a number of factors, including substance use and domestic abuse. And so we're also progressing a range of interrelated initiatives, if you like, in relation to those as well. And going forwards, as Catherine has just said, following approval of an improvement plan by the COG in early to mid February, we will be submitting a full report to elected members outlining in more detail all of that activity and more later on in February as well. So you'll see a full outline of our response to the inspection, the full details of the improvement plan related to it later on in February.
Well, thanks for that, Glenn. That certainly gave me plenty of information there. And Catherine, I'll certainly be looking forward to reading that report because I think it's such important work that's being done for children with mental health problems. I think it's going in the right direction and I'm pleased to hear some of the new stuff that you're planning as well. Thank you for that. The last question is in section 4.5.2 on page 92. I think it's quite positive again to see the significant enhancements and investment in public protection activity that are summarised in section 4.5.2 of the report, both from national sources, but also increased funding through the council. But there are lots of different funding sources and much of this funding is temporary money. I'm just wondering how officers are going to ensure that the developments that have been supported by these recent investments are sustained for the future. Because I'm not that convinced that the money will be forthcoming in future. So it seems to be a mismatch of funds. So maybe you could explain that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Bailey Wright. So that section of the report obviously sets out a significant increases in investment around violence against women's services and also around drug and alcohol services. So in relation to violence against women, the Scottish government have recently announced a national funding review to look at their overall approach to the distribution of funding around violence against women services to local partnerships. And that follows some concerns being raised through the improvement service and through COSLA, including the concerns that the Dundee Chief Officers Group identified and raised last year. And that is really focused on trying to move to a more kind of strategic commissioning approach to violence against women's services at a local level. In addition to that national review, the executive director of Neighbourhood Services is continuing to chair a local leadership group. That's a partnership wide group focused on violence against women, funding and moving towards a more sustainable local approach to that. And that group has been very much involved in some of the investments that you see outlined in the paper. And you'll also see in the paper that a lot of the investment around violence against women is focused on capacity building and mainstreaming of approaches rather than bringing in any kind of new services where there would be challenges around exit strategies. So the children and families remobilisation monies and monies from the government for RASAC and the learning and organisational development service are all about capacity building and mainstreaming and naturally helping us to identify the risks that there might be at the project end dates around continuation or loss of impact. They are, and Alcohol and Drug Partnership, again, a similar picture of enhanced investments from both local and national sources. And the Alcohol and Drug Partnership has reestablished its strategic commissioning group to lead on that aspect on behalf of the ADP and under its leadership. And that will support the ADP not only to manage these various funding streams that you quite rightly highlight, Bailey Wright, and ensure that we get best value from that at a local level. But they're also going to take a lead on developing an investment plan to support the fresh strategic plan for the ADP that they will be working on over the coming months. And so to make sure again that there's a proper strategic commissioning approach and that the ADP is well cited on applications for both local and national resources and can take into account sustainability issues and exit strategies as part of that overall investment plan. So that's kind of some of the key actions, but I can see that executive director for Neighbourhood Services wants to come in as well.
Okay.
Thanks, Catherine, and thanks Bailey Wright for your question. And just to reassure you that one of the roles that the chief officer group has given me is to lead a group just to make sure that we look at the funding streams for violence against women initiatives and make sure that we have a sustainable approach to them. And I think we've been quite successful as the report outlines in terms of securing resources. But this is something that we are keenly acutely aware of, that needs to be managed and carefully examined regularly. And that's the group that I chair is responsibility for doing that.
Well, that's good news as well. I know you'll do a good job, Elaine. But as I say, I'm sorry if I'm having to bring up finance again, but I just, I just would feel a bit more confident if we were seeing more monies coming in and not just something for six months or for a year, you know. I think we need to try and get back to some longer term funding so that we know, you know, we can have the services that will stand the test of time. But thank you for that. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Councillor Short, you were looking to come in.
Yes, just very quickly, because for myself, councillor Lynn and Bailey Wright, this is the second bite of the cherry. And because this has already gone through the IGB just at the end of December there. So I had made comments at that point, but I think I came in tonight just basically to say that throughout this evening, talking to the fire brigade, the police and the antisocial behaviour, it's always been concurrent that it's such a joined up picture that we have to all work together. And the fact that we've got the COG at the very, very top, that is that leadership that is then filtered down to the different levels. And then we, if we work as we've done this evening, very much across the board, looking for the right thing for the city. Because a lot of these problems, as we know, are generational and they won't disappear overnight. But as we continue to work on things like trauma, et cetera, which we're all experiencing at the moment, we can begin to unravel some of the problems that we have in the city. So So can I thank everybody collectively for all the work that we do? And also as politicians, that we don't shy away from it because it's really important that we do put our head up and make sure that we are asking the difficult questions and bringing them out. So because you don't solve a problem if you ignore it. So thank you for allowing us to go through that period where we do actually raise these and try and make a difference to the people across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Short. And councillor McCready won't be surprised to hear that I agree with you again and concur. And I'm sure we all concur with your thoughts and thank you for your contribution and your contribution there to that report, Bailey Wright. Because there is an enormous amount of work going on across the city and it sometimes gets lost. And this report allows us to focus that and to let officers speak to their work and for you to recognise that I think is important for those people working in these areas. So thank you very much for that. And with that, is this report noted? Thank you. And that is the business.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Good evening, everyone. And just to add my New Year's felicitations to everyone before we get started. Okay, Veronica.
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations? Okay, I'll move to item two. Item two, neighbourhood services service plan 2021 to 2024 progress report. This report is for your approval.
Thank you. So this is the mid-year progress report on the service plan for neighbourhood services. As you can see, just before we get started with questions, which I can see are coming in thick and fast. Obviously, from this, it's clear that our voids and relats programme has faltered. But we are addressing that through the lean service review, which is already reported to the housing best value group. But despite that, I would just like to draw attention to the fact that our housing service is delivering the highest level of tenancy sustainment in Scotland. And in addition, work to join up housing allocations, signing and tenancy management has moved our performance from good to sector leading. So I just wanted to draw out these two points, as I say, before we get started. Because I think officers have really had a very tough time, you know, and we've had a lot of issues, obviously, in the past two years that we've suffered the COVID pandemic, but they have still managed to, you know, to provide a service and to do their very best for our tenants. So with that, I'll start on the questions. So I think Bailey McPherson, you're first.
Thanks, Convena. And I concur with your positive comments. There's a lot positive in this. There's also areas where clearly there is a challenge and I think we fully accept that it is challenging times. The one thing I would like to highlight, and I think Mr Boyle's colleagues will come, you know, it will come as no surprise that I am highlighting it because it's something I frankly bang on about every five minutes. And that is what is on page twenty of the substantive page numbers, the top performance indicator. And that's the percentage of residents who are satisfied with the cleanliness of streets. Now, this is an issue I have a considerable concern about. I think I will not go into my concerns about the quality of data that we got with the citizens survey. I've tried in previous budgets to frankly cut back on the expenditure we're doing the citizen's survey. I'm not utterly convinced it's the best way of measuring, given the number per ward that are interviewed and so on. But I'll not go on about that. What I do want to do though is ask about other ways that we could be measuring this. Because I do not believe for a moment that ninety-seven percent of people in the city think the streets are as clean as they were ten years ago because it's simply not the case. And so my question really is around, should we not be measuring the volume of complaints that come in as a much more meaningful way of measuring the cleanliness of our streets and concerns that are raised by members of the public? Because I suspect that if you went back ten years, it would be lower than it is now. Now, I fully accept I have no proof of that. But anecdotally, from the time I'd been on the council, I would say, and it's not a criticism of the officers in any shape or form, it's a criticism of the amount of resource that's left and the lower number of street clearing staff that we have compared to, say, twenty fifteen, which is thirty plus less than it was in twenty fifteen. And I suppose my question is, is there some merit in reporting to us as elected members the volume of complaints in relation to street cleanliness year on year?
Okay, thank you for your question. Mr Simpson, would you like to take that one, starting off?
It should be Mr Boyle, I think.
Mr Boyle, okay. Tony, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Convena. Take on board the points that Bailey McPherson has made. I think the first things I would say about the report is it does indicate those indicators at page twenty. The first two are about satisfaction rates rather than complaints. So this is a generally pre-pandemic annual citizen's survey, which looks at general levels of satisfaction. The street cleanliness score, which is the third indicator down on that page, talks specifically about acceptable standards. Now, those standards are monitored through a national framework, through the local environmental audit monitoring system, which is just about to be replaced by another system, which is detailed within the right-hand side column of the report. I suppose the benefit that brings the city and brings every local authority in Scotland is that it shows that there is an independent means of monitoring what is deemed to be acceptable through a range of different visits to the city that's undertaken through Keep Scotland Beautiful. So there's definitely, there's definitely independence to what we're getting and clarity we're getting there. In terms of the wider question that Bailey McPherson poses about complaints, that's certainly something we could have a look at and it may be perhaps be best visited through the scrutiny committee reporting, through the general updates we give through that, Convena.
Can I just say how helpful that is from Mr Boyle? I think the bottom line for me is I think it's important that we have an indication of the level of complaints about street cleanliness. I have real concerns in this area. As I say, it's not in any way a criticism of Mr Boyle. He's staffed with an excellent job with the resources that they've got. I think the question for the council in the wider sense is the resources that are made available to environment management. But that's maybe one for another day and another budget. But the point I would make is that, the point that I asked in relation to sort of monitoring and reporting on the level of complaints, I think is a sensible suggestion. I'm very grateful to Mr Boyle for the suggestion that perhaps something going from time to time to scrutiny committee, I think would be very welcome indeed. So I'm grateful for that response.
Okay, thanks very much. I think I had councillor Crickshank next.
Thanks, Convena. My question is relating back to, well, it was also in antisocial behaviour and it's about the noise, the noise app. Can you give an indication of when the procurement process will be completed? And when can this go for full, for full operation?
Mr Sterling, would you like to come in on that one?
Thanks, Convena. I don't have an exact date, councillor Crickshank, but the process is underway and the team have been, are working with our procurement team to go through the process that we need to do. It shouldn't be too complicated, an exercise. So hopefully, without being able to give a specific date, it shouldn't be too, too, too much longer before we can roll that out.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks, Georgia. Councillor McCready, please.
Yes, thanks very much, Convena. I wanted to draw attention to page nineteen of the overall reports and stuff on recycling and in particular to focus on the deposit return scheme. And I'm aware that it's been postponed, so the implementation of it's been postponed. And obviously, I understand that it's a, it's a major, it's a major undertaking to bring that, to bring that on board. It's been postponed for a year, I believe, until twenty twenty-three. But I mean, I just wanted an idea of, from officers, what impact they're expecting the deposit return scheme to have on recycling rates in the city? Because obviously, you know, I've raised concerns in the past and I know, you know, the council has raised concerns in the past that, you know, that we're not meeting those targets, which are very difficult to meet, but we're still, we're not meeting the targets. So I just wonder what impact the deposit return scheme might have on recycling and whether we'll get any idea of how, how much or how many, you know, what level of drinks containers that end up, end up in the, in the general waste? And if there's anything more we can do about that?
Mr Boyle, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Convena. I mean, overall, the introduction of the deposit return scheme is going to have an extremely positive impact on increased recycling rates. It's anticipated that within Scotland, it's going to capture about one point five billion containers each year, of which ninety percent will be recycled within the first three years of the scheme being introduced. As councillor McCready alluded, the deposit return scheme bill has been delayed until August twenty twenty-three. I've got to say that this is a system that's well used across the world. Deposit return schemes are used to encourage people to recycle drinks containers such as bottles and cans. Zero Waste Scotland's research indicates that it will substantially improve recycling rates and increase the quality of recycling materials and significantly reduce litter. It's estimated that the scheme will generate an additional sixty-seven thousand tonnes of recycling each year Scotland-wide. The consequential impacts, however, on specific local authority recycling rates at this stage are yet unknown. It's anticipated that much of the material currently captured in household recycling bins and collected by councils will then be taken by the consumer directly to the deposit return scheme collection point. And obviously, this is a key point for us as a local authority to consider. But we will be represented with further dialogue on this point with Zero Waste Scotland directly through the local authority waste managers network. Convena.
Okay, Richard?
No, I think that's a really helpful answer. I mean, it's disappointing that it's been, it's been postponed. But, you know, I think we'll certainly might raise that someplace else. But, you know, I think it's, we'll look forward to that, that coming in because I think it will make a difference. You know, really pleased to hear Mr Boyle, you know, outline the difference that might make. Thanks, Convena.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan, please.
Excellent, Convena. Convena, just a couple of comments. I mean, the loss of rent through void properties or empty properties is about two point eight two percent. Or there's another one at one point five. And I know that the revenue monitoring report would suggest that there's about one and a half million of a shortage. And I think maybe in a percentage term, it kind of underplays the problem that we have. Because, you know, it lightens that either that or if you're telling the rent payer that they could be paying two point eight percent lesser rent, then I think it would mean something to them. And it would direct a focus on trying to address the problem. So I'm wondering if officers could, could have a look at that to sort of better reflect how, you know, that, that level of void affects the performance and the rent payer directly. The other one that I would make a comment is in relation to the risk-based assessment that was done for new build affordable houses. And obviously, we made as council provision for six million pounds worth of our own money to be building houses some time back and we haven't got that or we were going to be procuring and we haven't got that in place. And we've got a number of other areas throughout the city, such as Derby Street and others. We only managed to produce forty affordable houses last year, yet it says the risk assessment we've done hundred percent. So it doesn't really reflect to me that there's an action plan to address problems. Because whether we've assessed it as being a hundred percent, we seem to carry a great deal of risk because it's no happened. And I would have expected much more than happened if we're saying everything's rosy and we've, you know, a risk assessment we've done reflects a hundred percent. So I'd welcome comments with officers on that.
Mrs Verlaine, would you like to come in first of all?
Yes, thank you, Convena. I think in relation to void loss, you will always have void loss. I mean, that's inevitable in terms of tenancy turnover. I think we've had several discussions at committee about the impact that the pandemic has had in our ability to relat properties and also the action that we're taking to remedy that. And that action plan is in place and moving forward. And I fully expect that we will start to see some traction on that as we go forward. So I think there's a good body of work happening to turn that situation around. But it has been a situation that has been impacted by factors out with our control. In relation to new build, again, it's been impacted by factors out with our control in relation to the pandemic. And it's not just a local issue, it's a national issue. And we're seeing that coming through from Scottish government, who are seeing that housing associations and local authorities right across Scotland are experiencing significant slowdown in their, in their new build programmes as a consequence of the pandemic and also because of some of the costs that are coming through in relation to market forces. So this is all having an impact on delivering the new build programme. Having said that, there is a lot of body of work again being done to see how we can get further movement and we can start to open up again the new build programme and get that back on track. And one of the things that we did offer at this meeting previously was a briefing for elected members, particularly on new build, just to outline the steps that we are taking as a department, as a director, to move that forward. And it would be my intention to have representation from the housing associations and indeed the Scottish government at that briefing, just to put in context the national situation that is experienced right across Scotland in relation to, to the new build programme.
Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, thanks for that response. And, you know, I welcome what you're trying to pull together to, to, to address the issue. But it's a Dundee issue and, you know, I'd kind of like a regular feedback on, on what we're doing by way of how's our programme going to reduce and how many we're reducing the voids by on a sort of weekly or a monthly basis. So that would be useful. Can I just ask if one and a half percent that's mentioned in that would be the direct equivalent to one and a half percent of everyone's rent across the whole, the rental, Dundee City Council's rental sector? Am I making the right assumption that if we were back to normal type voids post-pandemic, you know, we would be, we're looking at a one and a half percent increase then based on the voids that we'll have?
Would that be, Paul, do you want to take that one?
I mean, it's, it's, it looks like by the revenue monitoring report, we're one point five million adrift, whether it's lost rent or voids. So, so what we're looking at in percentage of rent terms per household?
Paul, do you want to come in?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Convena, for the question. Bailey Keenan, I'm not close enough to how the service indicators are calculated in terms of doing that comparison, but I'm happy to look at that one separately and compare it to the percentages assumed in the budget and come back to you separately on it.
I see that. That'd be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. I think I've got Bailey Scott. I think you were actually before Bailey Keenan, so apologies for that. But do you want to come in now, Bailey Scott?
Yeah, that's okay. It's no bother. I just wanted to ask about the percentage of staff receiving an employee performance and development review. Only five percent had been done by the half year and the target to complete them, it says that it should all be done by the end of February. I just wondered what progress has been made since then and is that still likely to happen, that they'll all be completed by the end of February?
Mrs Verlaine?
Yes, thank you, Convena, and thank you, Bailey Scott, for the question. I mean, this is something that's very important to us and something that we monitor very, very closely. And we have had regular meetings with the service managers to ensure that we get these employee performance development reviews back on track. And we're confident that we can meet the revised targets that were put forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. As much as I would actually applaud, I think there's a lot of hard work through COVID especially. There's been many challenges and I think your departments are doing really well with these challenges. However, on page fourteen, with regards to universal credit and the continual problems it causes people as they transfer across to universal credit, by putting them into debt primarily. And with the forthcoming energy costs fiasco that we're going to see and putting more and more people into distress. I see that the officers are actually working against COVID as well with their own issues with illness and et cetera. Can we get some reassurance that the officers are able to cope at the moment and actually helping to get the hardship fund discretionary housing payments, tenants grants in place for those who need it?
Who'd like to take that one? Elaine? Who'd like to take that one? Elaine Beener?
Jackie Capell is on the call, who's the head of service that takes care of this side of the business. So I'll ask Jackie if she could comment on that.
Yep, thank you. I was just looking for Jackie's name there. In you come, Jackie.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Yes, it's obviously challenging for the officers just now with the different funds that are available. What we've actually done is when we're identifying anyone who has fallen into our ears, at that time, the officers would normally make contact with the tenant. And at that time, they'll discuss with them the discretionary housing payment or tenant grant fund if that's suitable for them. So they're using every available resource to them to make sure that the information gets out there to tenants to apply for these funds and support them with those applications at the time. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Yeah, that's reassuring. Thanks very much for that, Jackie. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Not seeing any more questions. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Veronica?
Item three, recycling improvement fund, purchase of additional route optimization software in cab units. This report is for your approval.
So, yeah, this is just looking for approval to purchase this route optimization software in cab units for our waste collection vehicles. Reduce excess mileage and thus help us to enhance our service by improving the quantity and quality of recyclable materials. Okay, councillor Flynn, please.
No, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. Was that the one before? Okay, Bailey Scott.
Thanks, Convenor. One of the issues that quite regularly is raised with me by residents are those who have got an assisted collection. And when they're missed, we all get phone calls to say that we've been missed and we have to make arrangements for them to go back. And in the main, it turns out it's because there's been a different crew on the job that wasn't aware that there was special collection, an assisted collection to be done. Will this new software shout out that you've missed one, you've missed one? So we'll not have the same number of concerns raised about assisted collections being missed?
Mr Boyle, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Yeah, that is very much the aspiration, Bailey Scott, that amongst other things that the benefits of this new software brings is the fact that it doesn't rely on a driver having to know the route. So things like assisted collections could be loaded onto the route to advise the driver and the crews of where to stop to do the assisted collection.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other questions on that one. So can this report be agreed? Thank you. Veronica?
Item four, tenders received by the head of design and property. Please, this report is for your approval.
Okay, so as per the report, this includes some renewals of steps and paths, some fire damage repairs and some upgrades to the Seabreeze viewpoint in the West End. Okay, councillor Short, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Hopefully, you can indulge me on this one. Really excited, obviously, to see some improvements come along to Baffin Street steps. But I'm just a bit unclear as to which part of the steps that are, whether it's from the plateau down to South Baffin or if it's within Baffin Street. So I wondered if perhaps Mr Martin could confirm that he'd send me over a copy of the actual works that are to be done, if that's possible, please.
Mr Martin, are you on the call?
Yes, thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Short. Yeah, I'm happy to send over some details, but I do understand it's the stairs down to South Baffin Street.
Oh, exciting. That's brilliant. That's great news. Very pleased. I'll get my monster eventually. Thank you.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks indeed, Convenor. And I'm also very pleased. And I want to touch on two items that are in item four. One is in relation to the refresh of the Seabreeze viewpoint, which is always good to keep. What is, I mean, I'll be quite honest, I said to Mr Boyle, I get few, if any, complaints frankly about Seabreeze, other than occasionally a little bit of graffiti or litter or whatever. But the general point is it's been maintained to a very high standard over many, many years. And it's good that it's getting a refresh. However, my other comment is in relation to the Mitchell Street and surrounding streets, Fife Street, Bendy Road and Polpap Road that have a sort of create a squarey, if you like, as they back on to one another. And it's about the paths, the teeth and Fraser, the paths and step improvements. I had a site visit with the tenancy officer, a number of the residents there. Seems like a lifetime ago, probably wasn't, but it was pre-COVID and, you know, the world has just sort of so changed since then. But anyway. And we had a site visit regarding that and a number of other issues in fairness. And I have to say, I give so much credit to the department for taking this on board and moving it forward and coming up with this excellent solution. To be frank, at the present moment, going down to the greenery post on these steps is a bit taking your life in your hands. They have seen better days and the paths at the back have frankly, they're so old, they're broken up and they're not in good shape at all. So I'm delighted at the outcome in respect of this. It's a very positive thing. And I'm absolutely no doubt that the residents will greatly welcome it. So thanks for that.
Thanks very much for those comments, Bailey McPherson. Okay, councillor Flynn?
I'll just carry on this good evening type thing. It's a welcome again to what's happening in Hiltown Court, One Hill in the Phase Five tender. I'm sure you'll agree, Convenor, yourself being a work consultant for that area, that we welcome this work being done. The thing I'm actually interested in within this is actually the number of the actual tenders to adopt sustainability practices in construction with the policy implications. Are we actually going to see in the future with regards to possibly the carbon footprint and the recycling targets within this brought forward as well?
Okay, who would like to take that?
Really very little at the moment.
Yeah. Who on the call would like to take that one?
Well, I'll just leave it with them and we'll come back in the future.
Convenor, I'm wondering if Mr Martin has any comment on that?
I don't have any detail on that, but we'll come back to you, Convenor, on that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And we'll make that available to everyone. Okay, thank you. So with that, can that be agreed? Thank you. And I think that concludes the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Short agenda, you'll be pleased to see. We'll just get straight on with the business. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, there have been no declarations. It takes you on to item two, which is minutes of the patient subcommittee and patient board of 20th of September 2021, which is submitted for information in record purposes.
Any comments, questions? Nope. Okay, I'll take that as agreed.
Okay, thanks very much. Item three then, before you say Brexit update, you're asked to agree the proposals.
Thanks. Obviously, this is another update on the situation with Brexit, the implications for us locally and of course nationally as well. Does not paint a very good picture. I think we're all acutely aware of the damaging effect and impact that Brexit has had combined with COVID-19 is of course a recipe for disaster. The report again sets out very clearly what the various components are, what the various implications are. And again, I just want to put on record my thanks to officers for pulling it together. Is there any questions or comments on this? Councillor Duncan?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I'm not going to radically disagree with your assessment of Brexit. In fact, I would preface my question by having a look on the first page of this report, which says on Budget Day, the Chair of the Office for Budget Responsibility said that the impact of Brexit on the UK economy will be worse in the long run than the pandemic. I think that's just something that we all might pause and reflect upon, which actually would take me through to page nine and the somewhat ominous heading of funding. Got a couple of questions there really. One is I see that there has been something, a funding, successful funding bidding stops well. And it mentions that there's a transport related bid for Dundee has been, is being prepared for the next round of the levelling up fund. So I'd be keen for some background and details on that. The other question, and I might as well just ask it now, is that I'm pleased to see, given the difficulties of securing funding from Brexit or anywhere, that City Development has two additional staff members to help with that. But I think Dundee City Council taxpayers would be interested to know, are they paying for these posts or are they being in any way financed by the UK or Scottish government?
Thanks for the questions, Craig. I'm not sure officers will have the detail for the first at this point in time, but I'm sure it can be circulated afterwards. If not, Andrea, can I come to you first, please?
Yeah, just on the levelling up funds. So officers are looking at what bids could be put forward for that. So there is a transport one being looked at at the moment. So it is at early stages. And full details would come forward before any bids were submitted. So further details will be updated to elected members at the appropriate time. And the executive director of City Development is leading on that process at the moment. In relation to the officers, there is two additional officers and that money came from the services realising that we need to put more resource there. So it was done within current budgets and there has been no additional funding come from the UK government. What is clear is that currently a lot of the funds that are being made available are bid funds. And so whilst we had an officer who was very good in the council, who dealt with most of that as a singleton officer, we felt that we needed to bolster that team to make sure that we could maximise the bids when that process is, when those processes opened up. So that's why we've updated that team and made more resource available.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Andrea. And I mean, just to reiterate, I'm not disputing the fact that it's wise to have officers fully engaged doing that. I just wanted to perhaps tease out that the Dundee City Council taxpayer has been left to pick up the tab, as it were. But thanks for that.
Thanks for the question, Craig. And I think it's worth saying as well, obviously, there's a couple of elements to successor funding, for want of a better description, the levelling up fund, the community renewal fund, et cetera. And just for updating committee through the Scottish Cities Alliance, which our chair would also seek a meeting with, Michael Gove directly, to have a discussion around some of the problems and challenges that are presented as a result of the funding mechanism that's been deployed. And also the fact that in some areas Dundee hasn't, I think, been given a prominent enough position in recognising the issues of deprivation and poverty and the need for that resource to come to the city. So I'm not suggesting there's in any way going to be a miracle as a result of that conversation through the Scottish Cities Alliance, but I'm ever hopeful and I'll keep committee abreast of any developments that occur on that conversation. I see no other questions or comments. So can I take your silence as, oh, sorry, Bailey Keenan, sorry, I didn't see that.
Convenor, what were the comments you could make in relation to having a word with Michael Gove and trying to attract some money for the city? I mean, right at the outset, when Brexit was on the cards, I thought it was important that we collectively as a council look at the issues that we're likely to face. And, you know, many of them are unfolding as we go. But, you know, in looking at the funds that do become available, such as this multiply fund that's helping adults struggling with numeracy skills, I'm wondering what sort of bid we've got in for that and what's our chances of success? Because I think we need to look at every bit of funding. Certainly, we'll have our share of adults within the city that struggle with numeracy that certainly would benefit out of that and perhaps get themselves into employment if that's what the whole thing was there to address. But, you know, I mean, I think it's really important that we keep an eye on funds as they unfold so as to make sure that this city gets its share.
Thanks for your question, Bailey Keenan. I think it's an absolutely spot on point. I don't know if you've been listening to the conversations that the chief executive and I have on a frequent basis, but I'm also always asking officers to chase every penny that we possibly can to leverage. And I know that officers are looking at that. I don't know if officers have any specific detail on.
There's a wall flying on the wall in your office, I'm afraid, as much as you might think.
Well, I'm not in the office, so that's just as well.
Just to let you know, know you're bigged.
Thanks. Andrea, do you have any specific information on that point?
Yeah, so Convenor, we haven't heard any details yet of that particular funding. And my understanding is that's money that's been kind of hived off to the shared prosperity fund, which we don't have full details of yet. And so it was mentioned this morning at the Brexit advisory teams, so Diane Millen will be leading on supporting how we develop any bid for that. And that would be done in conjunction with communities and our employability teams as well and also children and families. So we'll be looking at that in detail as soon as we get further information and we would be looking to bid for funding.
Thanks, Andrea. And again, if there's any updates, then we'll make sure that elected members are kept abreast of that. Any further questions, comments on this? No, I'll take your silence as agreement. Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much. Item four then, for his local government financial settlement for 2022, 2023 and implications for Dundee City Council when you're asked to agree the report.
Thanks for that introduction. Yep, this report advises members of the figures issued by the Scottish Government in December in respect to the local government finance settlement. Obviously, there's still further conversations occurring and the budget has not been set in stone at this point in time and will come forward to Parliament, I believe, in February. And there'll be a further special committee of policy and resources on the 24th of February as well. And officers are still examining the report in detail and that will be updated in due course for that meeting on the 24th. But I'll just move straight over to questions and comments. So councillor Hay first.
Thank you, Convenor. Just a quick question, if I might. I noticed that on item 6.4, in relation to the Scottish Government's reduction of 1.676 million from early learning and childcare, ring funded funding, will this mean that the council will have to make up the difference from our own balances? Or will the service just need to be reduced to take account of that reduction?
I'll bring officers in. My understanding is that that reflects submissions by each of the councils on actual cost versus assumed cost. But I'll just defer to officers on that point. Paul, is it yourself?
Convenor?
Oh, Robert, sorry.
Right, if I may, Convenor. So ring fence grounding is for specific purposes and is allocated in this case for early years and for the Scottish attainment challenge. So the council will have to forward proposals that fall within the funding that is available going forward. So in relation to the Scottish attainment challenge, the executive director for children and families were reporting back, I think at the end of the month, on the 24th, on proposals for how attainment can be delivered with the funding that's provided. In relation to early years, that budget has been underspending. And it's believed that at the moment that will not present a problem in terms of delivery of service, though there may well be cost pressures in the future. Members may well be aware that the distribution of the ELC monies has changed from one based on projected outcome to one based on needs measures as part of the distribution. So that has created a shift in some of the funding, but it's not considered that that will present a significant problem for the council in the year ahead. I hope that's helpful.
Thanks very much, Robert. I think that answers the question. I'll skip over councillor McCready at this point, if that's all right, Richard, because I'll just take questions and then I'll come back to your amendment. Councillor Richardson, you have a question?
Thanks, Convenor. My question is around about the paragraph that's at the top of page four, 5.4.2. And it's around about the direction sort of thing from the Cabinet Secretary that basically is encouraging all councils to consider the general reserve fund balances and the efficient use of public funds at this time. And I know from other papers that are going to this committee at the end of March, in the accounts, we had a balance of over 50.5 million sitting in our general fund balance, which is usable. And from our revenue. And from our revenue monitoring, we've got uh another six point four million underspent on the general fund. Um so our reserves are looking extremely healthy at this current point in time. And I'm hoping that, given the 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 direction it's been given, that these reserves will be put to good use. And they will be used to mitigate some of the savings and cuts of the twelve point two million that you're considering making um in next year's budget.
I think that was less of a question, more of a point, Margaret, but we obviously will be preparing a budget as all the opposition groups, I'm sure, will be uh in preparation for the budget meeting in March as well. And it's for each of those groups and councillors to decide on how they spend the money accordingly. I I would say that it's absolutely fine to ask that question for the cabinet secretary uh to suggest such way, but each council will be very different. Each of the circumstances for each of those individual councils will be very different. The considerations for councillors in each of those local authorities will be different and we set the budget, no colleagues in Scottish Government, I should add. So with that, I shall now take the next question, I think, point from councillor McPherson, Bailey.
Uh tha- thanks indeed, Convenor. I just want to make a general point. Councillor Duncan and I have decided not to move an amendment to what is simply a factually uh accurate uh um uh report. That said, we just do want to place on record our real concern that yet again local government has had, quite frankly, an appalling settlement from Scottish Government. And it wouldn't be quite so bad if it wasn't the same as every year essentially since two thousand and seven, even in years when the block grant um from um the UK government has increased in real terms. Um we still see cuts to local government and it's quite clear. I think it's the voice of this council should go out loud and clear that it is very clear that Scottish Government has simply not prioritised local government over the last fifteen years. It just simply has not. We should not be in a position where year on year, we're talking about in excess of ten million pounds worth of cuts, twelve point two we're looking at. Now, I hear what you say that all councils will be different in terms of their actual budget. And Convenor, you're quite correct on that. But the one thing they will all have in common, all have in common is that they will be unfortunately implementing cuts for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three financial year. And that frankly is very concerning because at a time where uh uh all councils in Scotland face considerable challenges, considerable pressure on services, having such a poor settlement is really bad news. Now, as I say, um you you're correct in saying the finalised budget um from Scottish Government, it's not finalised, but we know where it's going. It's not going to be good news. And I know that you and your colleagues and other local authorities as leaders of councils will do what you can to push the case for local government. But the bottom line on this is something's got to give. You cannot go on with this year on year in terms of local government being the area of public expenditure that Scottish Government um um deals with in terms of dispersment, that local government is the the last in the queue. And that's how I feel about it. And I know I am not alone. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks for your comment, Bailey McPherson. I think we know each other well enough. Uh and you know me well enough by now to know that I don't certainly sit on my hands with these things and I will continue uh to lobby for every sinew I can possibly squeeze out of any government of any shape or size. And I think it's also important to acknowledge that actually some of the priorities that are detailed within the report as well are priorities for local government in the sense that health and social care, NHS, uh looking at the child bridging payments and welfare support, et cetera. So uh I don't think all of these areas we would want to see reduced either. And that's always the difficulty, isn't it? Uh and I suppose I would say and happily put on record that I'm quite happy I'm not Kate Forbes. Um given the challenges of Brexit, Covid and the austere financial times that we live in. Um but thank you for your comments on this. Oh, sorry, I muted myself there instead of moving screen. So I think the next question I have is from councillor Scott. Phil.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Um just to reiterate really what Bale McPherson said, I think it's really disappointing that despite the UK government giving Holyrood the largest budget settlement in the history of devolution, we find ourselves again having to make eye-watering cuts. And anything you can do, Convenor, to encourage your colleagues um in Holyrood to give us as much money as possible, will I'm sure be gratefully accepted by every single councillor. I wanted to ask if I can, though, Mr Amrit, about the one point seven million pounds that we're having to pay for increased employers' national employees, employers' national insurance, so to say. Because last month we were told that we'd probably get reimbursed from that because the money for that was coming from the extra bonnet consequentials that the Westminster government was giving to Holyrood. But there's actually nothing in this report about this. So is that one point seven million just got to be accounted for in the overall budget settlement that we've been given by the Scottish Government?
I'll pass over to Robert in the first instance.
Um thank you, Convenor. So yes, there's no additional allowance in the in the settlement that we received for um any additional cost um pressures going forward um for us. The the Scottish Government have indicated that they've um treated all parts of the Scottish Government, except I think the NHS, the same way um in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it just seemed very disappointing when we were told that we'd be reimbursed for that, yet we find we're probably going to have to find money for that too. Just just a wee bit disappointed. So to say, we need as much as much money as we can and hopefully some more will be coming before February. Thank you, Convenor.
Thank you very much. Um just to say, I suppose, equally, you know, if you want to lobby your own colleagues in Westminster and in Holyrood to make such uh additional funding requests, that would be very helpful as well. I think it's important to recognise, though, when we talk about the current financial position and the cumulative effect of budget cuts over the last, well, decade I've been on the council. I'm looking to Willie here as the more experienced of the two of us. Um but certainly for about twelve years of austerity, I I think that there are fingerprints of Westminster all over that. And I don't think that we can get away from the fact that this is a cumulative problem, not merely a one-year problem. Um but with that, I shall go back to councillor McCready, who has an amendment, and then I'll come to Bailey Keenan after.
Um I don't know if Bailey Keenan wanted in before the before he seconded me or not, but.
Bailey Keenan, do you?
Happy for Richard just to go and make the comment that I was going to make anyway, so.
Okay, thanks.
If officers could share the the amendment, that would be helpful, I think. I'm sure they've done that already. Yeah, so I think that's done. So, yeah, I mean, um thanks very much, Convenor. I mean, I think we've heard uh from various parties that have spoken so far tonight that um that that they would like the council to speak with one voice on this issue. And I I think that's something that I would like us to say. I mean, I get, um, you know, that that we've said these things before, but I think I think it's important that we do uh make our views formally heard, you know, rather than uh just saying them in the in the council meeting. So that's the purpose of the amendment. So it was good uh to see council leaders from across Scotland and indeed from across political parties agree to a statement at COSLA before Christmas, which described local government settlement as unacceptable. Um I think I want to thank officers for the paper before us. I think there could have been more detail. Um and I think, you know, we'll certainly be be raising that. But it is sobering reading and demonstrates, I think, the problems that the council uh faces. You know, as paragraph three point one of the report uh you know, sets out the financial implications that we have to make savings. Um also probably known as cuts of up to, I think, twelve point two million to achieve a a balanced budget for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I do not, I don't think, you know, I think people have said this already. I don't think anybody in the committee stood for elections so that they could make cuts of that magnitude. I don't believe that anybody here wants to do that. And I think, you know, as we've already uh started out on a little bit, we can have a debate about whether it's the fault of Holyrood or Westminster or both of them. Um but we also need to face the facts that, you know, you can make political points about it. But these savings or cuts impact on services here in Dundee and the impact on real people here in Dundee. It's not about making political points, it's about delivering services and delivering the 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 services that people needed. You know, I think the other thing to say is I think we unanimously recently agreed to adopt a community wealth building approach, which in shorthand is about keeping investment in jobs local, something that the council agreed to. The cuts to the budget set out in this paper would have an impact on local jobs and the local economy. They have an impact on the life chances and quality of life of Dundonians. So I think that goes against that community wealth building approach, which I think has got broad agreement across the council. If we look at paragraph five point six in the report, it sets out um that the council's provision over revenue budget includes an allowance of two percent for pay awards. And I know that some money will be held to help achieve the Scottish Government's welcome uh as, you know, as far as it goes, public public sector pay policy. I think it could go further. The reality, however, is that there is, as, you know, councillor Flynn um and others, but councillor Flynn uh mentioned in an earlier committee, there is the start of a cost of living crisis around particularly around energy in this country. And it's also important to note that the last uh figure for inflation from November last year was five point one percent, which means that a pay rise of two percent is a real terms pay cut. So I think many of us, I'm sure, clap for key workers. But, you know, clapping for key workers is all well and good, but we really need to start paying uh for key workers. So I think Dundee needs a settlement which takes account of inflation and increased demand for services and allows us to reward uh the hardworking council staff that we've often praised in committees for particularly for their work over uh during the pandemic. You know, I think we need to reward them. I think giving them a real terms pay cut is not the way to reward them. So I welcome the recent work by COSLA and I think it's important Dundee City Council follows that lead and highlights our concerns. And that's what the amendment that I've put forward uh tonight tries to do. And I think you said yourself, Convenor, the budget is not set in store, although as others have said, I wouldn't, uh, you know, I wouldn't be as foolish as to suggest that we can that we'll be able to make huge changes. But I think it's important that we, you know, we should, I don't think that means we should give up. But I would say to you, Convenor, if the you know, you've said yourself that you will, you will work hard to get any money from anybody anywhere. So I think if we if we accept this amendment tonight, it'll strengthen your arm when you're calling on the Scottish Government, UK Government and anybody else you can think of to make a fair settlement for local government across Scotland and for Dundee in particular. I think our city needs investment. It needs a ha- it needs hardworking council workers delivering good services to the people of Dundee. In order to do that, we need a local government settlement which is fair and which reflects the reality of the economic situation that we face. I think that's really important. So I hope therefore that colleagues will support the amendment in my name tonight and speak with one voice and call for fair funding in the local government. And I I hope you'll be you'll be able to support that, Convenor, and I hope that that will help you in your in your campaigns to uh secure extra funding for the city. Thanks. So I move the amendment in my name.
Thanks, Richard. I'll I'll bring in Bailey Keenan in just two moments. But just to to respond to your amendment and and your comments. I think hopefully colleagues across the chamber know that my number one priority irrespective of politics is the city, which I love, live and breathe on a daily basis. So uh I'll leave no stone unturned as we're trying to progress with an ambitious agenda for the city as an administration and as a a council. And I'm more than happy to endorse um your amendment. Again, I think you referenced the the COSLA letter um which went out by, it was signed by all thirty-two local authority leaders. Uh I think it's important to recognise that we, as local government, do a tremendous amount. And you can point to a number of initiatives even this evening. Uh some of the items we've been discussing in terms of priorities for the city, I think, is really impressive and something that we all broadly welcome. So on that basis, I'm happy to support uh your amendment. And again, I'll come to Bailey Keenan next.
Good. Thanks, Convenor. I'm pleased that you're agreeing to support the the amendment brought forward by councillor McCready. I think it's really important that we try to speak with one voice. Uh my colleague Marvin Richardson tried to point out earlier uh that obviously we did end the year in a fairly strong position. Uh and the the papers that we have later on certainly suggest that. So it would be useful to know a clearer position on what is left by way of balances. Uh and in in the paper that officers are due to bring forward, I would welcome that and I would welcome a note of the uh proposed savings that they suggest technical adjustments and uh budgets identified by officers can come forward at the earliest possible time so as that we can start as a city to realise what needs to be done uh when it comes to uh uh addressing and setting a new council tax for next year. But the initial uh response is obviously looking at the the paper produced uh passed by yourself uh and officers to us this evening that suggests we need twelve point two million pounds worth of cuts for a break even budget next year, which is really quite alarming. And, you know, you're right to say to Willie, but there's been a few people that have been around a long time and see year on year cuts and wonder whether it's all worthwhile. And, you know, the bit that makes it worthwhile is when you're actually able to deliver something for a constituent that makes a difference to the quality of their life. And I think everybody enters into politics to try to do that, uh no matter what the party that they come from. I think it's important that we do whatever we can this year, given the inflationary pressures that are on family households and family budgets. Food prices are up by a cricket score. You know, the sort of low budget cost supermarkets uh still deliver a very expensive shopping. You know, the jobs that have potentially been lost, income that's been lost over the period of time, the potential of any council tax increase uh, you know, is is some that families are not exactly looking forward to. But, you know, aside from that, our people are out of a job if it's twelve point two million pounds worth that we need to achieve. You know, there's fuel increases and energy costs that are affecting household budgets on a regular at the moment. And I think that we need to do what we can. So it's really vitally important that we, you know, collectively, uh and, you know, with that, um the 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 support of the whole chambers, then you're in a position to go back to government and say that there is a cross-party agreement to achieve a better settlement for Dundee. You know, we we hear that attainment challenge money will be cut to the city at a time uh a a later time uh in budgets, which is, you know, doesn't bear thinking about either. But hard-pressed families are uh are are going to suffer if we've got to make twelve million pounds worth of cuts. So I'm hoping that we can unanimously agree a way forward to try to attract more money for the city.
Thanks for your comments, Bailey Keenan. I am the eternal optimist and I'm always hopeful that more money will be found from somewhere in order to to help us not only square off the budget, but continue with that ambitious agenda that we do have to make the city a better place. Um so certainly uh endorse those comments. Uh I know that officers are, have been working flat out particularly over the festive period. And again, I think it's worth putting my thanks and and hopefully all of our thanks uh on record because they have been working flat out as these figures have been flying around between COSLA, Scottish Government and local authorities as well. And I know that they're continuing to work hard on the the paperwork um and the detail that you reference. And I'm sure they will provide that um as soon as they possibly can. Uh all with the caveat, of course, that the until the budget is set in Parliament, it's not necessarily set in stone. Uh on the point around uh reserves, I suppose I'm always very conscious that broadly speaking, we've always retained some of the lowest levels of reserves uh of any council in Scotland. I think that was the right approach in many respects. And we've utilised our money in the best way we saw fit for the benefit of the city. I'm also very reflective of the fact that we have huge impact as a result of Brexit, which we've discussed as a result of Covid and as a result of another, a a number of other components you've referenced, inflation, energy costs, et cetera. So I I don't think we should just all of a sudden blow a hole in our uh reserve position. I think we need to be uh prudent and thoughtful around what that means. And I also reflect on the last time we all met in the chamber for a budget meeting in which councillor Mara, um I'll paraphrase ever so slightly, um said that um reserves are for a rainy day and it's pouring outside. Little did he know that we were about to deal with a pandemic. So um with all that said, I absolutely endorse the fact that we want to do the best for the citizens of the city. And I'm happy uh to move forward in tandem, hopefully, across the political chamber. I will now move to uh Billy Scott and then Bailey Sawyer.
I was just to say, um, Convenor, I'm supportive of the amendment. It's really disappointing that the when the Scottish Government gets a ten percent increase in its budget, that we have to face uh no increase at all in our core funding. And it's really soul destroying every year having to uh continue to make cuts to to services. It's certainly not something that I um uh relish in any way whatsoever. Uh and there's so many unknowns still in the the budget. The the inflationary assumption when the Scottish Government set its budget will be nothing like it will be during the next financial year. So I think that needs to be looked at again. And also, we don't know what the 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 outcome of the public sector pay policy is going to be. And that's going to have an impact on it as well. So I think it's right that we have this amendment tonight, which formalises the comments that all elected members have made during this meeting and captures uh what we feel about. what we feel about it and sends a message to the Scottish government that really, for the sake of our communities and making sure that we can, we can continue to provide the services that they need, our budget needs to be looked at again.
Thanks for your comments, Bailey Scott. I think we can, what's the famous quote, lies damn lies in statistics? And we can all argue about the figures. I think that, as far as I'm aware, the overall Scottish budget in 22, 23 is 2.6% lower than 21, 22. And after account for inflation, the reduction is 5.2%. And that comes from the Scottish Fiscal Commission. So I think, you know, it's, it's all well and good looking at this in one year, but looking in the round, there are huge challenges across the board. And I think whether it's local government, Scottish government, UK government, there has to be a reality check around financing of local government and making sure that we are adequately resourced. So with that, I will bring in councillor, sorry, Bailey Sawyers, and then we'll move on to the next item. Bailey Sawyers.
Thanks very much, Convenor. I think it's not particularly surprising that there's unanimous support for this resolution here tonight. We'd all be failing in our jobs as local government councillors if we weren't to support this. But as you hinted earlier on, we've got one job to do and Kate Forbes has a completely different job to do. So whilst we might, and from our point of view, quite rightly, be arguing for extra funding for local government. You know, is the finance secretary to take money away from the National Health Service in the midst of the greatest pandemic in any of our lives? Is she to cancel the doubling of the Scottish Child Payment? And he uses just as two examples of the really, really difficult job that the finance secretary has. You know, if we had proper powers of a proper parliament and were able to borrow, the finance secretary actually has less ability to borrow than we do as a local council. And that's just daft. If we had a proper parliament with proper powers, we wouldn't be in this position because we could borrow to invest for the future. I really look forward, Convenor, to seeing the opposition party's budgets being presented in Holyrood and see if there's a huge increase in the allocation that they put forward for local government and where they choose to take the money from. Because I think that will be a wee bit of a proof in the pudding rather than us uniting behind writing a letter saying we need a bit more money. Well, who are your guys in Holyrood going to be doing about this? And lastly, somebody mentioned the Scottish attainment challenge. And I would point out, as I did last month, I think that every single Labour leader, every single every single Labour leader voted for the change that is to reduce funding to Dundee. So if Labour want to do a wee bit of lobbying, maybe they need to do it within their own party rather than being so critical of the Scottish government. So on that point, I will end. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Bailey Sawyers. I think that's going to be the quote of the night. That's just daft. But with those words, I think that's unanimously agreed unless somebody tells me otherwise. Okay. Thank you all very much for your contributions. We'll move on. Willie.
Thanks very much. Item five, in previous revenue monitoring report, we asked to agree the recommendations.
Updated report for you. Any questions, comments on this? Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor, and grateful to the officers for the report. There's a bit of a recurring theme on page 24, 6.6. The underspend is due to unfilled posts, 6.7. Slippage due to, yes, unfilled posts. Chief Executives Department unfilled posts, Corporate Services unfilled posts. Now, this is in no way a criticism of officers. We realise the challenges. But I was just really wondering if the chief executive or another officer can give us an update on the challenge being faced in relation to filling key posts. Because it does obviously have an impact on both service delivery, but also on the staff that are trying to infill whilst unfilled posts are not filled. Now, I realise this is not a Dundee alone issue. And clearly, the Covid situation has had a real impact on the ability of filling posts in terms of, shall we say, the willingness of people to move around Scotland to take up new posts. But I'd be really grateful if there's, if the chief executive gives an indication as to how serious the issue is for Dundee and if there is any sign of it easing at all.
Given that you specifically asked for the chief executive, I'll bring him in and then he might want to pass to Robert. But Greg.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the questions. So at the moment, as you said earlier on, this is a particular challenge that I think's been faced across Scotland. So we are seeing a degree of challenge around recruitment. And I think that's due to the fact that there is a loyalty that people have to their employers, particularly to leave during Covid. But in some other respects, what we're seeing is when people are leaving the organisation, that travel is no longer a barrier to where they're securing jobs because of the approach to online working. So there is a number of people who are leaving public sector and taking jobs within the private sector. And because distance isn't a barrier, they're securing large salaries for different jobs. So at this point, we continue to recruit and advertise for all posts that we need to fill. But it is fair to say in something that I'm happy to keep elected members updated on, that there is a significant challenge around the number of areas within the council. And it's not just those posts that are at a management level or above. It's across the board that we are seeing quite a large reduction in the number of people who are applying for jobs in comparison to pre-Covid. So we're reviewing it at the moment, but it is a challenge that we're trying to look at different ways. And part of that is refreshing the campaign, looking at modern apprentices, looking at graduates, you know, and really looking at that whole succession planning. So we've got a number of different things that we're doing, Bailey McPherson. But at the moment, I think it's fair to say that it's a challenge across all services for a lot of different roles.
I'm very grateful for that update from Mr Colgan. And it is helpful that you will keep elected members updated. But also, I'm sort of heartened, I realise the challenge. And I'm sort of heartened by the fact that officers are giving a good deal of thought as to frankly innovative ways in which this can try to be tackled. Because I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that every other local authority, the other 31, will have exactly the same challenge as ourselves. But at the end of the day, we do want to provide the best quality of service to our citizens. And I'm grateful for the efforts that officers are making to deal with what is a pretty challenging situation in relation to recruitment.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I'll move on to Bailey Keenan.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Convenor. There is, in city development, there is a reflection that an architect, there's a shortage of architects to the tune of 400 or 525,000. And there is a direct cost associated with that as well in relation to lower recovery. So, you know, I know that there's issues in recruiting, but what can be done to, you know, deliver these? It would almost suggest that one way or the other, would we be that bothered about the income if we didn't have the individuals? But, you know, I think the architectural services are probably one that should have had an input into the issues that were had recently with roofs. Because I would have thought that the architectural services might have had the input about standards that changed and have a better understanding of that as they, you know, guided further down the line to the guy that was actually doing the job and producing the worksheets that they should have worked to. The other question is in relation to the 639,000 in neighbourhood services that reflects additional income created by temporary accommodation of properties. And then we'll move on to page 30, where it suggests that we've got 1.25, 1.2 million of an underspend reflected in the voids and rent loss. And obviously another rent loss at Derby Street because these properties are not into play as yet due to delays. And I'm wondering why the earlier amount creating accommodation isn't assigned to the housing revenue account? Because I would imagine that a lot of the properties that are there belong to the housing revenue account. Yet some other account, policing accounts has been attributed with the money that's been created. So it would appear to me that that money should be in there offsetting the loss in income in the rental account. So could officers explain that?
So thanks, Bailey Keenan. You've got two questions there. One specifically on city development. I'm looking, not necessarily seeing any of the relevant officers that I can see unless I'm wrong. Please correct me if I am.
Convenor Neil Martin is on the call if there's a question specific to city development.
Apologies, Neil. Missed your name there. Neil, can I come to you on that point around the specialist area of architectural engineer services?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. In terms of staffing, as the chief execs outlined, it is unprecedented circumstances. So there is demands on that. That said, in terms of overall construction industry, because of the pace and due to Brexit and Covid, works are going at a certain level. And at the minute, we're managing to balance the workload in terms of what we're doing with construction services and our other external partners. And with that, that is obviously reflected in terms of the throughput and the level of income against the targets at this stage. And what I would say is in terms of what we are doing going forward, that's monitored on a monthly basis at our management meetings and with other heads of service at our weekly meetings with Robin Presswood. And there are other areas that are similar to this in planning with building standards and the demands on building surveyors as well and such like. So we're keeping that under under close supervision on a monthly basis to see how we can improve the progress for all the projects as demands are needed to meet the programmes that we've got for all the works.
Can I maybe ask a supplementary, Neil, just seeing you're there? The 400 and odd thousand then that were in a shortfall in fees, is that reflected that perhaps we haven't made the capital budget and therefore, you know, the architectural services aren't entitled to any funding there? Or is it external funding that we'd be picking up if the architects were there and working on it? So is it money slushing between one department or a council and another? Or is it direct income to the council?
No, that would be internal fees that are charged out for time spent on projects.
So potentially, is it down or running behind with your number of capital projects as well?
It's a combination of running behind, but also what could be done, but we're not necessarily managing to execute that all on site just due to Covid or lack of staff, say for example, in construction services. So there's a number of reasons that would accumulate to come to that actual total on the page.
Thanks, Neil. Kevin, on your second question, I'll come to Robert, I think, in the first instance, and then you can direct as appropriate.
Robert, just a question in relation to the finance and the HRA reference.
Thanks, Convenor. I think Paul Thompson will be better placed to answer that for us.
Go on, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Happy to do so. Bailey Keenan's correct. The rent associated with the temporary accommodation certainly would go to the HRA, albeit the variance that you see in the report relates to the service charges. And the service charges elements that goes to the homelessness function and that sits within other housing. So any additional income generated from service charges in relation to a higher number of properties than we budgeted for would sit within the general fund of the report. In relation to the query on the HRA and the voids, I can confirm that the base budget, including the assumption that properties would be going for 2%, that's roughly 1 million pounds. But I'll look at that in further detail in relation to the query that was raised earlier in relation to the service plan and respond accordingly.
Thanks very much, Paul, for coming back on that point. Okay, I see no further comments, questions on this. So can I take silence as agreement?
Can I maybe ask for a bit more detail for Paul in relation to why that sits within that? You know, the other side of the temporary accommodation sits within the neighbourhood services and a bit more detail. Could take that offline.
Yeah, might be better just to get further detail offline. And I'm sure Paul will be happy to indulge. Okay, with all of that, is this agreed? Thank you very much. Willie.
Yeah, thanks. Item six says capital expenditure monitoring report. This is for noting.
Again, update on the last position reported to committee. Any questions, comments on this? No. Okay. Can I take your silence as agreement, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. Item seven, before you stand this city council, our council and audit, this is in three parts. Firstly, have audited statement accounts for Dundee City Council, Dundee City Council Charitable Trust, Lord Probst of Dundee, Chartered Fund. The Dundee trustees are for noting.
Any questions, comments? Nope. Is that agreed? Thank you.
Second part's external auditors' report. This is also for noting.
Again.
And then lastly, you have the response to the report, which is for noting.
See no jumps to the mouse. Okay. Thank you very much. If that's agreed, then that is the business. Thank you all for your participation and contributions. Have a good night. Have a good week. Take care. Thank you.
Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Everyone.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.